I'd like to call to order the special meeting, March 4th, of the Fall River School Committee. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Corey.
Here.
Ms. Larabee. Ms. Pereira.
Okay.
Ms. Rodrick.
Here.
Mayor Coogan.
Here. Let's say a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting to any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do we have any citizens' input?
We do not, yes.
Okay. This is a continuation of the budget hearings where we left off last time. We were not fortunate enough to be joined by two principals.
One bit missing.
Sure. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Superintendent.
Thank you. At our February 26th meeting, we received requests for additional information regarding class size, FTEs by school, and grants column, which we've provided to all of you. Principals were on hand on the 26th to answer any questions regarding their schools. We do have Principal Cobb from Fonseca and Principal Simpson from LaTerno here tonight to answer any questions regarding their schools. They were not present on the 26th. And again, I want to reiterate that this was a different budget process. With ESER funds due to expire at the end of September, it was critical that we prepare a budget that is fiscally responsible and sustainable. This committee has invested heavily in providing schools with layers of support that allow for solid infrastructures. We've invested in systems building and staffing. We are asking simply for, the draft is asking simply for 100% net school spending. The new proposed positions are enrollment and compliance-based and driven by the absorption of the positions that currently sit in ESER funds. Tonight, we have department heads available to answer any questions regarding their departments. So with that, hand it over.
Thank you. Any comment? All right. Let's open up with Fonseca. Fonseca Elementary School. Does anybody have any questions regarding the Fonseca Elementary School? Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Rodrick. Sorry, Ms. Rodrick, please.
So, I apologize because I've been out of the loop the last month because everybody's been sick, and that's here we are. So I'm just trying to catch up to speed on a couple of things. I see on here that we have a ESL classroom conversion from a district VILS facilitator. So, I could, this question could have already been asked and answered before, but the VILS facilitator position, that was a Verizon grant-funded position?
Originally, yes.
Okay. So I'm just not understanding how that goes, how that converts to an ESL teacher position, funding-wise.
So, the VILS grant, funding from the VILS ended, I believe, last school year, where they funded a portion of the salary last year. This year, fiscal year '23, it's fully funded, that position is fully funded in the budget. And so now, we're taking those VILS positions, and in some cases, we are converting them to compliance positions such as this, as an ELL position.
Okay. So to call it a VILS position probably was a misnomer before, because the V was for Verizon.
The V was for Verizon, correct.
Right. So I'm just thinking, funding-wise, it wasn't funded by Verizon, that Verizon grant lasts this past budget cycle already?
That was, that was the title of that position previously.
Okay. All right. So that answers that question, sort of. And then, I noticed that there were other positions, I just need to pull it back up.
Can I interrupt just a, so, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Agia.
It's related to the VILS issue. So, when did the position end being funded by Verizon?
Fiscal, fiscal year '22, June, June '22.
So, assuming that that's true, at that point, the person worked for Verizon. So can you tell me what the advertisement process was, as well as any other information, to how any of those individuals would then therefore become employees of the Fall River Public Schools at that time?
They were always our employees, but Verizon Grant paid for their salary initially. But they were always our employees.
Subject to Verizon?
The grant, yes.
So that ended?
Yes. But part of the, part of that contract with the grant was that they would pay for part of it, and then we would absorb until the Verizon grant was completed.
Yeah. So the Verizon, the Verizon piece itself, even though there was no funding, I believe, ends at the end of this fiscal year. And so at that point in time, the commitment piece is no longer ours at that time.
But, I'm just having a hard time with the fact of, at whatever time we had X amount of people in Verizon positions, at the same time, we had positions called instructional technology, something. How do we change, well, we changed it, I guess, in one way, but then not in the budget, to say, at that time, we needed one at each school. Now, it depends. Some principals say, "Oh, I don't need it." Some people say, "I need it." Some people say, "I'm going to convert it." Well, I, for one, have never taken a vote, and I'm the chair of the Technology Subcommittee. We talked about this many times, about what are we going to do when this ends? So how, how does it just get to, all of a sudden, all these people are now working in the part of the budget, full-time, we're still going to call them Verizon, but then they're really an instructional technology facilitator, and we don't hear anything. I haven't heard of the Subcommittee or anywhere. Why do we have some have them and some don't? What sense does that make in the district?
That was part of the Verizon grant, Mr. Agia. They're not the same position as the instructional tech, you're right that we had instructional tech facilitators, Mr. Cabral is here. We also have techs at each building. As you know, when we, when we got the Verizon grant, we were integrating technology in all schools. What we are saying is, as that grant is sunsetting, we are, and we are in a different place, right? Technology plays a different role now in our schools. And what we have been doing is, what principals have requested, is, they don't feel like they're in the same place that they need someone to be doing that work, that now, they need to be doing different kind of support with technology. It's not really about making sure everybody has their one-to-one, that they're doing that, the technology integration, et cetera. There, it's a different kind of work. And that position is sunset, that grant is sunsetting. We've owned those positions since last year. So, that-
So, so I guess, to cut to the chase. The Fonseca schools before us had 650 students, and they had a VILS person for three years or so. Well, where is this conversion coming from?
It's from, it's from another school.
It's from Morton.
It's from Morton.
So, if Morton says they don't need it, what does Morton get? Because what is, what is the other schools? There's no consistency, is my point. Some schools are going to say they have it, they need it, I'm, we've coached people up, we did this. It has to be consistent from a district. It can't be, and I've said this before, we have winners and losers in the budget because we don't do a look at the entire picture. So what's going to end up happening is, somebody's got to do the work at that school, at some point. Somebody's got to do the work, and I was going to bring this up there in technology when it's their time, but somebody's got to do that work. So if one principal gets away with just saying, "Oh, I don't need it because I want something else," it's going to come back to the technology department at some point. They're going to have to do the work with less people because we just converted positions. I'd rather it come from the director of the technology through the superintendent to say, "This is how we're going to fund it." And I just think it's, it makes no sense, at the very least, the V has to be taken out of it, because it's no longer a VILS position. And then, what are their requirements? I asked this question in the past. So we have instructional technology folks, that they have a job description. So now, when these people got converted last year, are they working under the VILS, or they working under the instructional technology job description?
They are still VILS people. They are, that grant is expiring this year. We are, we-
Is it expired?
It's, no. The, the funding for the position, but we have a VILS grant that is expiring this year for other, so that-
Do the VILS, sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. So, none of the VILS positions, that doesn't mean we don't have tech facilitators that we're going to continue to have to support schools, but our intention was not to continue with the VILS piece for any of our schools, specifically VILS people, because you're right, the grant is expiring, we're, we're going to be done, and we need to absorb those positions. And certainly, Mr. Cabral can speak to you.
So, I, what you said, I agree with, but what we're seeing here disagrees with that. Because, in my mind, if the, if the VILS folks who do not do the same job as an instructional technology person, totally different job description, we didn't, as far as I'm concerned, that's what it is, until somebody proves otherwise. So, at that point, they would end on June 30th, if that's what you're saying. At that point, we would open up and say, now, across the district, we need X amount of instructional technology folks to do the work that we need in all the schools. If you'd like to apply, sure, you can apply. It's like a system, it's a process. It's not just, well, one school said they can do without it because they got something else, like a, like trading. It shouldn't be that way. And, and I think more comprehensively, we should be doing that discussion via the Technology Subcommittee, where we can get into these issues rather than through this process here. So I apologize for taking Mrs. Rodrick's time, but something needs to change with that. I yield.
Anything further?
No.
Ms. Rodrick, I just interrupted her, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Back to Ms. Rodrick, then Mr. Corey.
So on that same, same line, right? So I see that there's a conversion from RPA for an ESL teacher, so I'm wondering how, not necessarily how that impacts you, but how does that impact RPA?
So we, so at RPA, we had two, originally, we had two full-time ESL positions. One of those ESL positions is moving here to make, create this teacher at Fonseca. We had a Stone full-time position over at Stone, for which we can meet the needs by making it a .4 over at Stone, and the .6, so essentially, three days a week will be at RPA, and two days a week will be at Stone.
What would be really helpful, at least for me, was if we had something that explained some of those conversions, because I see them, and I see that, you know, position A is being converted into position B, but it doesn't explain why. So when you say something like that, that makes sense to me, like, okay, we've got this person here, this person can split up that time, but that's not clearly outlined here. So it would just be helpful for me to have a better understanding of it. The other question I have is that I see, there are one, two, five, six, seven positions that you asked for that were unfunded for this year. So I'm just trying to understand what that process looks like, and what does that mean for you now, for next year, if those positions are unfunded? How does that impact the work that you either planned on doing, or wanted to move forward with, that maybe now it's a little bit tricky?
Sure. So I will say that the most critical positions, which were the L teachers, two L teachers were funded, so I was very happy with that. Certainly, there's still wish list items for me, but those two L teachers were really critical, and we can do a lot of work with, with those new teachers and the structures that we have on board.
So the two things can be true at the same time, right? We can be very happy with the fact that that was funded, because that's a critical need, but we can also say, "Hey, this is going to impact us in this other kind of way." So, I'm not forcing you to say publicly how that's going to impact you, but it's seven positions, and, you know, that's a lot. So I'm just trying to understand what that process looks like, about how that decision gets made, because we, we certainly have talked a lot about putting a lot of effort into social emotional learning in our higher needs populations, but then, when I look at the unfunded positions in general, half of them are from those populations. And so that's, that jumps out at me.
Yeah. I will say, we also do have a very large cell staff, right? And so as the year has gone on, we have seen improvements in our conduct and cell data, so my hope is that that will continue.
I, I just go back to, there's a reason why you asked for them, right? And so, again, I just encourage folks to talk about how that then impacts them, because there is an impact, no matter how we look at it. It doesn't sound like we're going to have that discussion here, but it's something that I would certainly like to know. So, I yield for now.
Thank you.
If I could just clarify.
Go ahead.
So, when principals comes to us, they bring us a list of critical needs, as well as wish lists, right? Nice to have. I've said this at each of the meetings, our priority needs to be on making sure that every single position that is needed due to enrollment increases, due to compliance, that those are filled. I think that it's a, I personally feel like it's a bad practice right now to just say yes, yes, yes to every single position, and we're going to have to sustain every position. And we have added hundreds of positions in the last three years. Fonseca is one of the schools that is very heavily staffed because of their status, and they should be. But, at some point, we have to say, and what I've said to principals, what do you need? Do, can, can you run your school appropriately with these positions? And, and that's, that's the barometer? And, yes, these are nice to have. We said we will hold on to that, and then we'll see where we are, and see, based on our needs, based on, see if we can add. But if we just keep adding, 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 I just want to say, we have to sustain all of these positions.
No. I agree with you that they have to be sustainable. When you look at the new ones that have been added, a good bulk of them are still funded through ESER funds, so I'm just, I'm cautious about how that's going to play out.
We're absorbing those.
Right. But I'm cautious about how that will play out, because we're absorbing them, but that money's got to come from somewhere, right? And so that's why, just, this is a budget conversation, so that's why I'm asking the question, how does that impact you? I'm not giving anybody a hard time, it's just, there are things that jump out at me. When I look at that, and I see, you asked for seven, that weren't funded, you know, I, I think it's an okay question to ask, how does that impact you? Right? And so it's not to put anybody down, it's not to put anybody on the spot, but that does have an impact on folks.
I don't want you to think for one minute that question, like, that's what we're here for, right? To, to have a discussion about it. All I'm saying, the, the priority was to absorb. We added layers of support, and we put them on ESER funds, right? And now, we're going to absorb all those positions. That's 100 and some positions, in addition to the other positions that we're adding. So, each one of those positions, we need to make sure we position ourselves, no pun intended, position ourselves to be able to sustain these positions, because we wouldn't want to take out all these layers of support that we worked so hard to create in our schools. So, that's a very valid point, and I think that we can go back and look at that as we finalize the budget, or as we see funds become available. But right now, we're trying to figure out how we absorb those layers of support, as well as add any crucial positions.
Mr. Corey?
Ms. Cobb, I just want to say it's really good to see you again. I've been away for a couple of years, and now you, you're in a different school, and I just want to praise you for your commitment to the Fall River Public Schools.
Thank you.
Thank you for all of that. It means a lot to me personally.
Thank you.
I just want to, with all of that being vetted, are you, do you have everything you need for your school? Are you happy?
I am, yes.
That's good. The only question that I have, then, I'm looking at the absenteeism. I know it's in a difficult demographic in the city, and I want to, I'm curious as to know what type of family backup you're getting. You know, are the parents with you on this mission to help their children?
I have to say, the community at Fonseca, including the families, has been very welcome, very supportive. You know, I think if you look at that chronic absentee rate, absentee rate for Fonseca, we had a drastic reduction, March 1st this year compared to last year. I think that's a few things. I think there has been some new monitoring systems put in place. We've increased the team that's been monitoring attendance. And I think that we're in a place now where kids feel happy to come to school. We're doing some different things, and I have to say that the families have been very supportive along the way.
It's so important, because, you know, everybody's under the gun on absenteeism. I believe it's a different picture now, post-COVID than it was even pre-COVID, and so everybody's really struggling with that. And I know that the Fonseca's where it's at, I want to make sure that we support you in every way we can. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Ms. Corey. Mr. Agia.
Yeah, just a question for the Superintendent. Is this what you would consider a zero-based budget?
Level-funded budget. Level-funded budget is what I would, oh, we did the process?
How you did the process, yes.
Yes.
So, part of why I sometimes question, in the past, prior to you being Superintendent, I told the last Superintendent, who claimed that they, we did a zero-based budget here, that he was totally wrong, because we're not doing a zero-based budget at that time. And the more I look at this budget, we're not doing a zero-based budget here either. Because a zero-based budget is, you start from zero, and then you look at all the needs that we have, and then you make value judgments along the way. We have not done that. What we've done is, said, "Last year, you got X amount of salaries and FTEs in your budget at any given cost center or school, and we're not touching that, because that's where we're starting from, and then we'll see what we can add." We're not looking at it to say, if somebody's overstaffed, they're going to get a reduction, and somebody that's understaffed, that's what we, true zero-based budgeting is, and I'm operating under the condition that that's what I thought we were doing. So when I ask some of these questions about, "How many counselors do we have? How many this do we have?" It's with that in mind, that a true zero-based budget would be done that way. But, I honestly don't think that that's how we are. Ms. Cobb, when did you know what was funded in the budget?
After the budget meetings, when you guys got the budget.
So when you walked out of the budget meeting with Superintendent and the leadership team, you were aware that we were not funding, as Ms. Rodrick said, I think it's seven total?
Some were put on question, and some were, some were yeses and some were no's.
So you knew that they were no's?
I knew some of them were no's, yep, and then I-
When did you know that there was seven? The, the seven that show up on our, because the only thing I can go on is what I get. So I got handed us on February, whatever, this document says, "The first five were yours." When were you aware that you didn't get those positions in the budget?
Finally, finalized was mid-February.
And, not from the budget, in the prior meetings or something? Like, I'm just trying to figure out what the process was.
Yeah. Well, the Superintendent meets with, with all principals and all departments, so I think she hears from all of us, and then makes some decisions afterwards.
And then you had another meeting that said, "By the way, you got the EASN, you didn't get those."
Yep.
That's all I wanted to try to clarify. The, last meeting, I told, you mentioned conduct is improved. So I had asked for some conduct data, Madam Superintendent, and I don't believe we received anything in the last week. Assuming it's forthcoming?
We'll get it for you.
You make it as a valid point to say why you needed X, Y, or Z position, which therefore is the reason why I asked for the conduct data, was to try to determine whether we have certain things or not. Now, you have been staffed, you said, fully staffed and appropriately, so I've been happy to support those positions. You have three vice principals.
Correct.
You have three school adjustment counselors. You have three SEL liaisons. You have X amount of department heads. So, and the state's watching over every move you make.
Correct.
Logic then therefore would indicate that if that's the model that we're using to prove to the state why the Fonseca school is successful, I still can't figure out, and this is not a question for you, but it's more for the district, why don't we have that same model for everybody else? Because you're saying you're fully staffed, the state's probably saying the same thing, and it, it just frustrates me to look at it, to say, why we don't do that? I still can't see it. You look at the org chart. We ask for the org charts for a reason. It very clearly articulates what you have, and you have some of the neatest children in the city. So, if it's working there, I don't understand why, at other schools that have like demographics, we're not doing the same thing. But you had mentioned before that you got the ELL teacher, and the ones on here is unfunded. Is that because you asked for two?
I actually asked for three, so I got two funded, and we'll, we'll keep looking at the numbers to see, and if, if I know I could go to Superintendent Ponce, if at the end of this school year, the numbers look higher, we can certainly talk about, I would go to her, ask for a third one.
When I look in the line items, where am I finding that the other two positions were added?
I'm sorry?
So she said that she got an addition of two positions, and that would be just under the additions?
So it's the, it was through conversions, Ms. Agia? So the two positions that Principal Cobb got were through conversions. So you'll see on the conversions page, the two positions with Fonseca.
So, to piggyback on what my colleague to my right was just asking about, so the conversions at Fonseca are, they're not conversions, because it's not her positions?
They're conversions from other, they're conversions within the budget from other, from other schools.
Right. But wouldn't that just simply be a reduction at cost center A, and an increase at cost center Fonseca? Like, why do we have to do it as conversion? So, I just don't understand what the benefit of us, other than to confuse, why would we have this? Wouldn't we just say that the position that it came from, wherever you just said it was, Morton? So we would say Morton has a reduction of one, and Fonseca has an addition of one. When I see position conversions, I look at that as, as one member, is that, she's running for Fonseca, she has a position called STEM teacher, and she wants to make it into a science teacher. That's converting her STEM teacher to her science teacher. Conversions from one building to another, to me, are not listed, shouldn't be listed on the conversions. It's false representation of, of what we have, and it's very hard to figure out, what are we adding? What are we subtracting? It just, you know, to me, it's just very, it's very hard to figure out. And you're saying that you have everything you need, I think we've staffed you up pretty well. I'm hoping that the conduct data that we get indicates the same, obviously. My last question though is on those lead teachers that you have not funded. Is that from the, when you became, or your school became level four, whatever, there was all these positions that, based on the plan, indicated everybody gets paid extra, you have different positions. What are those lead teachers? Are they not that? So you have some lead teachers already?
Yeah. We do have five lead teachers at the school. I was looking to increase the model so that we would have representation across grade levels, pre-K through five, and also an L and a sped lead teacher. Those are stipend, stipend positions through the contract.
The ones that you currently have?
Correct.
And what would that cost?
$6,000 per teacher.
And you feel as, the five that you have, are they assisting, are they worth the $6,000 in what they do to help your school move forward?
They certainly are a big part of it. They are part of our ILT. They have teachers that they work with, they provide professional development, they've been running a new teacher support group this year. So, you know, they're the staff that's able to give input from the teacher perspective.
So, to me, I think that's a glaring problem that we need to correct, because you have a high L population, right? Who's focusing on the L population as a lead teacher now? Is it dispersed amongst five, or how does that?
It was dispersed, and we also were just able to fill our L coach/interventionist position in November, so that person has been on board supporting the work in, for our ELL students as well.
And they participate in all the things they want?
Correct.
And in spite of that, you still ask for it, even though they were hired three months earlier?
I, I was looking for a teacher that would be a lead in the L.
And how about the other department that you said you were looking for?
Say that one more time.
You said another department you wanted a lead teacher in.
Special ed.
And who does that work?
There is currently a special ed lead teacher, but what's happening now is, there is a first-grade lead teacher, there is one that's at the special ed lens, there is an interventionist, two interventionists. I'm looking to have a different model where pre-K through five, classroom teachers, as well as an L and a sped lead teacher.
And the, how does that compare with other schools across the district? Their lead teachers, do you have more, do you have less? Do you have, is there any of those positions that you talked about at other schools?
I can, I only have prior experience at one school, and I did have one lead teacher per grade level.
Madam Superintendent, do you know if that's the case?
That's not across the board. Not everybody has, but I think that last year, we added more lead teachers. So, basically, everyone wanted one per grade level. Now, what we're seeing is, now people want one for special populations.
And is there any lead teachers in Fall River Public Schools that focus on special ed?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
Can you tell me where?
Durfee is one of them that has it.
There, I, there are a couple.[1756.83] There are a couple. There are, to identify exactly which ones there are, but I know there are a couple.
You know where I'm going with it, right?
Yes.
It makes sense for $6,000 to have the thing. And if we have it at one place, or two places, or three places, and Principal Cobb's asking for it at a school that's underperforming and in need of, like, I just don't understand why that, for $6,000, we didn't add it. I think you know my point on that. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further? Thank you, Ms. Cobb. Next school up is Laterno. Do we have any questions or issues at Laterno? Ms. Rogic. Mr. Simpson, please.
I want to give you a chance to sit down.
Appreciate that.
My only question is actually the same that I asked, just the rationale around the conversions, because we're going from a coach, an ESL coach interventionist to a teacher, and then an ISL to an SEL liaison. So I'm just looking for an understanding of what those were about.
Yeah, absolutely. From the SEL perspective, this year was the first year in which we had those positions. We added two of them. My approach has been a little bit conservative in terms of, with the new position, I want to onboard one or two, see how, what the applicant pool is like, how can we train and implement them? The applicant pool is actually fantastic. It's one of the strongest pools that I receive. So based on this year, who we've hired, the impact that they've had within our school community, we felt like we wanted to add another position there. The current ISL position, we haven't hired yet, that the applicant pool isn't the same. And with the need of, particularly in K through two, of increased social emotional support, the decision was made to prioritize that. Similarly, I'd say on the MLL front, coach position was posted. Couldn't find a candidate that fit the needs of our particular staff and school. Population is increasing as it relates to transitional multilingual learners, and the decision was to make that conversion so we can have more direct support in the classroom. And myself, as a former MLL director, vice principal Nancy Rodriguez, strong skill set as it relates to MLL, we figured, let's convert that open position in which we don't have a candidate to a teaching position to support.
I appreciate that. So, you know, I ask that because when we're converting one position, that means that another position isn't going to be filled, and that was a position that had been asked for, that had been needed. And so that's why I'm asking for what those rationales were. But that was my only question, so I yield.
Thank you. Anything further? Mr. Agia.
I'm having a hard time finding the page again, but, so you provided a cost containment of an SEL liaison, according to my, what I'm seeing? So you gave up an SEL liaison?
We converted an instructional support liaison, an ISL position, to become an SEL liaison.
So, under here it says cost containment, Laterno Instructional Support Liaison. And that's because you had it vacant? Is that what you're trying to say?
Sean, I got, Sean, what was that? So the ISL cost is cheaper than an SEL liaison? So an SEL liaison is $45,000 versus a ISL, which is $35,000. So that's the reason why it's considered a cost containment.
And I see under the program improvements, the SEL liaison.
Yep.
And is that the pool you were talking about, that you had a good pool?
That's correct.
And you had no pool for the ISL?
Not the same quality of candidate applicants, yeah.
And how do you compare with other schools if they had X amount of ISLs and X amount of SEL liaisons?
I'm not exactly sure with the ISL, with SEL liaison, I believe that would put us towards alignment with having an SEL liaison per school adjustment counselor.
Yep. So the reason why I ask that is if you, if you had filled the ISL position.
Yep.
You would be here today saying, you need to have an SEL integration person. You'd get both, in my opinion. By you saying I didn't fill it, or whatever the reason is why you didn't fill it, you just lost a position, just being brutally honest, the way I see it. Because that's what we do. Oh, now it's a cost containment, it's not an addition. Whereas your SEL liaison that you asked for is probably just bringing you up to where, I don't have it in front of me, but you're probably bringing you up to where everybody else should be. But it cost you and your school an ISL liaison because you didn't fill the position. That's the way that I'm seeing it. Do you have any, and you had no other needs that you, I can't find the unfunded positions on my sheet. Did you have any other positions that were unfunded, sir?
For this year, the proposals were the two positions that are requested, we converted. And so we feel confident that we can move forward next year with the positions that we have. Of course, pending demographic changes and, you know, changes in populations. Last year, we onboarded three special education teachers and two SEL liaisons. So it was a big shift for our community. It was great to have these new resources. So we're continuing this year to train, hire, support, build capacity. And with, you know, the addition of additional SEL liaison, and then a ELL teaching position, we're hoping that we'll be in strong.
So you didn't ask for any positions, but you feel like you're going to make great gains at the school anyway?
I had, the two positions that I asked for, the L position and the SEL liaison, were the ones that.
And you got those, what you're saying? You got those, you said, right?
Correct, yes. So I feel we're funded, we're staffed, we're excited.
So high expectations over there.
Absolutely.
The, I don't see it in this budget, and it might be a question for maintenance, but the repairs, air quality and all that stuff, is that, is there any additional line items that were needed specifically to deal with that issue at your school?
It's not specifically in my budget. I know, obviously, there are costs that are going into the building. I think that would live in a different line item.
But you, as principal?
Yep.
Have you been told that you're going to have X amount of dollars and resources to make sure that that building is safe, the air quality, or whatever? Like, are you, have you been told that you're going to get all those things all year? Because this is budget time. So if I ask later on in maintenance and whatever.
Yep.
But have you been told that you're going to get certain things?
We have been, we have told Principal Simpson, as well as that staff, like, we are working on the roof, that any repairs, we have been very clear about what needs to be done in order to correct what's going on over there.
So we'll see that in the maintenance projections at that time. Okay, thank you. I yield, sir. Good luck.
Thank you.
Mr. Corey?
I'll be brief. How you doing, Mr. Simpson? Do you have everything you need?
Yes, we do.
Are you happy with it, projection-wise?
Yeah, we're really happy with the team that we assembled, the resources that we have, and all the work that collectively's gone into the budget.
The only thing that concerns me is the absentee, the rate of absenteeism at your school. Formerly, there used to be, in the past, there was the walking school bus concept that was very successful in the Laterno School District. I don't know if that's still being carried out. However, that being said, whatever we can do to support your attendance numbers, you know, in any way in the future, please let us know.
We appreciate it. You'll be excited to know we're going to relaunch the walking school bus this month. We piloted it last year with teacher and staff volunteers. It was a great experience overall, not only for hopefully supporting absenteeism, but community building, getting our staff out into the community in the mornings. It was a great experience.
And that's what it's all about.
That's right.
The community building aspect of it. Thank you. I yield.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Next department up is the art department. Does anybody have any questions for the art department? No questions? Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Who?
Mr. Agia.
Mr. Agia.
I also agree with my colleague to my right, that it would be a lot better if we had information, one pages or something. So we used to have them come before us and at least give a presentation. So I'm looking at the art page, page single. This is the art page in the budget. So I don't really see, there's no narrative here to know that the director feels everything was good, or that they added this, I asked for that, any of that stuff. I just have one page. Am I missing it?
So just to answer that, so principals all provided rationales, and the department heads provided rationales for all their needs for the schools. And because the positions were not, in past years, we've provided, we were able to fund most of the positions, and so it was a pretty easy undertaking to update, edit, do what we need to do to get it in the budget. Would that, this time around, we were not so fortunate to be able to fund, you know, most of these positions that were requested by the positions and so, by the, I'm sorry, by the department heads and the principals. And so with that, I made the decision just not to include them, because it was going to be misleading to what was there. And so it would have been very hard to follow what was going on. And so that's the reason why it was not included.
So it was misleading to give information to the school committee?
No.
Is that what I'm hearing? I'm paraphrasing, but just.
No, that's not.
Help me to understand what you just said.
I'm trying, I'm just trying to be clear as to why it was not there. And so the reason it was not there, it was, it would have been, it would have read improperly. And so there was a lot of information there for things that were requested that are not being funded. And so I didn't want to mislead anybody to say that the positions that were being requested were funded. And so with that, it wasn't included for that reason.
So I'm just hearing that for the first time. So what you're telling me is that I have a page that says unfunded positions?
Yep.
Separate from that, you're telling me you have directors that have requested from the administration stuff, positions, supplies, whatever, that we do not see because you chose to say that's not something we want to give this year? Is that what you just said? Because that's how I took it.
I'm saying that it would have been very hard to follow, and it would have not flowed with the budget, is what I'm saying.
Okay. You know my stance on it. Superintendent would know my stance on it, just from, I find that answer to be totally unacceptable. Because we're doing a budget. The school committees, one of the major priorities of the school committee is to review the budget. What I'm hearing is, we're going to review only the parts of the budget that the superintendent or Mr. Almeida chose to give to us, not the pieces of data that show what a director, well, I'm only not picking on the art department, but that happens to be her, whatever she presented as far as what she would like, why she wanted something, whether it was data or information, went to you all. You chose not to fund it, but we've never had a chance to have that discussion. And that, to me, is absurd, totally. We have one page from art. I don't know Ms. Francisco very well, but I know that she's not shy to at least give us some information. I look at this and say, this one page is because somebody chose not to give us what her rationale is. Like, for instance, one question I would have is, do you have any plans to do anything to improve the art department across all of our schools for our children?
Yes.
Wish lists, anything like that?
Yes.
Can you tell me where that data is? Where that information is? Is it only inside of you, or have you showed other people?
No, it would be in the document that I provided.
Right, thank you. I don't want to, I'm not giving you a hard time at all. That's my point, Madam Superintendent, is that we're sitting here saying, I'm looking at this saying, that's all she's got is the one, like I said, I know that you would have some thinking outside the box, whatever. We're also sitting on some money that we need to have and make improvements in a quote-unquote zero-based budget. Now, school committee doesn't need that information. All we need is to say, here's the information, don't ask too many questions, because I'm going to get everybody to roll their eyes, and then we can go home.
Mr. Agia, just to be clear, so I can just respond. So that's not, that was never the intention. The reason it was not included is because it would have not flowed with all the documents. I will gladly send you every single document that was provided to us, from the principals and the department heads, tomorrow. It will all be sent an email by the superintendent tomorrow, if that's the information that everybody wants. It's not, it was never to not provide the information, it's that it would not have flowed with the document. That's all.
And all I would say to that is, I'm not suggesting that you, every piece of information has to be in this document, it's a public document. What I am suggesting, though, is that having a little respect for the committee and saying, part of our duty is to analyze and approve a budget, that information would be very worthwhile for us all to have. That's all. I yield.
Anything further, Ms. Rogic?
Just a quick question. So are we saying that you asked for more than just a fine arts department head?
Yes, but in the performing arts budget, which will be, because I do the two. I'm the fine and the performing arts, so, but nothing in the fine in addition to what you see.
Fine arts, and then you asked for a performing arts department head?
Correct.
That's all you asked for?
No, and I asked for an additional band itinerary.
Okay. All right. I yield.
Anything further for art? Thank you, Ms. Francisco. Next department up, athletics. Athletics. Do we have any questions for athletics? Mr. Agia?
Just a comment. I've said this for two budget cycles now, that we have elementary and middle school sports that's kind of taken off over the past several years. And I think I would say the same thing I've said last time. Superintendent was going to take it under advisement a year ago, that I think we need to have a focus on a director of the elementary and middle school, that's a full-time job just doing all of that work. And I think we need to look at, when we talk about conversions, it kind of makes more sense to me to take the assistant athletic director and convert that to a middle, elementary and middle, so that you don't actually have people in two different places. That's not for, your question for you, Mr. Boston, it's just, I've mentioned this already to the superintendent, it was going to be taken under advisement. I don't see any changes, so I just assume that's the change not recommended, but, and I don't think, my other question's going to be to you, sir. Did you have anything that wasn't in here? But.
I'm not sure what you're looking at.
Any requests that were not funded in the budget?
Again, I'm not sure what you have in front of you, that what you're looking at.
Which positions?
I have, what I have, I gave during my budget meeting, but I don't know if you had that same document.
A bunch of assistant coaches, it looks like, and increase for middle and elementary school coaches. Was the only two items that I see, 58 and 59, on here. So I would assume that one of them's contractual, probably.
Yes.
And the other one is just probably extra positions. What I would probably request, if I was looking more to scrutinize a little more of what we have, is we only see the recommendation for assistant boy soccer, girl soccer, cross, like those positions, but I don't have a good perspective on what do you have in the budget for all those, without going through each one and look. So like, if it was me, I would say, where is the recommendation to say, I need an assistant soccer coach? And then the answer to that is going to be, based on, I have 87 kids try out, I got, you know, some kind of rationale. We have, we don't see that rationale. So you must have given that to the, during your meetings, which Ms. Almeida now says we're going to get copies of, so.
Well, the rationale behind it was, in 2015, boys, baseball and softball, were both given a varsity assistant coach. And it worked out, it's been working out really well. So it works out, I don't even, you know, if you can put it in data, but it's increased instruction, it's increased supervision, you know, something that you really can't see on paper. But the supervision would be there, the extra instruction would be there. And a lot of times, a JV team will be playing at the same time as a varsity, so the varsity coach is left all by themselves. So, you know, it's good to have another set of eyes, you know, in the dugout or, you know, on the field. That was the reasoning behind these sports getting the assistant varsity coach.
Right, sounds rational to me. Sounds like some of what I've been asking for the last two meetings, is that I just don't understand why one has it and what doesn't. So you just told us that you have two sports that have an extra coach. Two. How many sports do you have, total?
Well.
Twenty-eight, thirty, something?
Freshmen, between freshman JV and varsity, we have like 40, 42?
Yeah, 42. So we got two winners, two winners out of the, all of your 40-some coaches, and the other 38 just so happened. However that went back, we could probably track it down. Who made that decision? Who was behind this, that, whatever? Either, in my opinion, either we do it across, or we don't do it at all. Shouldn't be. And what sports get the extra coach? What sports got the extra coach you just mentioned?
Back before I became athletic director, it was, and I coached baseball for 10 years, and I didn't have it. And then as soon as I left, they got it. It was, baseball got the assistant varsity coach, and softball got it.
Yep. And, I just, I don't think it's fair, let's just say that. It's nothing about-
Which, I mean, it may-
It's nothing about you, sir, just, what's right is right, and you have said it. I've said many things about sports, we need to improve, we, all of that stuff. You need coaches, you need adults, you need the kids to be coached. At the same time, as if you don't have enough players, then you gotta do something. So if you're, if you're not a successful program, something needs to change in there too. But if you don't have the right tools, like, as far as one sport gets three people and one doesn't, that, that becomes a problem. It used to be you'd get extra only if you had a male coaching a female, like, there was a position of something that made sense like that too. Do you have any of those in the budget?
No, I mean, as far as like, having to have a female, is that what you're saying?
No, so if you had a male coaching a female varsity sport, do you, do you get the opportunity to hire an extra female to monitor those children when the male obviously can't go in?
Yeah, so, the last contract, we got specialty coaches. So, that's, that's worked out pretty well.
And that's in the budget?
Yeah, it's in the last budget. Specialty coaches, yep.
Perfect. Thank you very much. I yield.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Boston. Next department up is curriculum. Hearing nothing for curriculum? Mr. Aguirre?
I would just say, I basically have the same comment I just made. We have one page for curriculum. So I'm sure that Dr. Curly has other plans and other things, I didn't analyze it, but I'm not gonna belabor the point, you know what my feeling is, that-
Yep.
I'm sure there's more to this than, I'm looking forward to getting the other data. I yield.
Thank you. The next department, we're gonna ask custodial department, but we're gonna skip down the agenda to facilities, maintenance, admin, campus maintenance, and security after we do custodial first. We're just gonna give Mr. Pacico an opportunity for all of his departments. So the custodial department, do we have any questions on that first? We're just giving everybody a heads up. Anybody have it? Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, just looking at the, the budget here, the end of the budget where it says overtime comp, office equipment, furniture, maintenance, general classroom supplies, like, I don't know what the categories are. Can you just explain in a quick, what classroom supplies are under custodial, is my guess?
It's just custodial supplies. It's a generic coding in Munis, but it's custodial supplies.
So it's not classroom, it's meant for general custodial supplies?
Correct.
Yes. And do you know how much that was spent last year? Roughly, is it up, down, or is it?
It's probably a little bit more than that, but I'm looking for you right now, Mr. Aguirre.
And the line of office equipment, furniture maintenance is, what is that for? Is that, like, desks for schools, or is that?
I believe that's just like a contractual service line for custodial, for that line. But to answer your question, Mr. Aguirre, on the, what was spent in custodial supplies? I'm sorry, I just, I thought I grabbed it. So last year, we spent about five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand in supplies, Mr. Aguirre, NFY-23.
So, I'd like to request some backup of what that is, just to clarify, but I, custodial supplies makes more sense than classroom.
Yep.
And the other one, you said office equipment was contractual?
Mm-hmm.
For what these? And the reason why I'm asking this is a similar, so I can only go by what is here.
Yep.
And what I have is the salaries of the full-time, you know, people, then, under it, I have these five lines. We don't have any backup documents at all. So, when it says eighty-five thousand, I'm thinking that's for office equipment slash furniture maintenance, but to me, that's not a lot of money. And then I'm saying, where is all of the money in our budget?
So it's in the maintenance, and you'll see it on the maintenance side, you'll see all the lines on the maintenance side.
So custodial, like, if the custodians are needing supply, uh, equipment, it doesn't fall under custodial?
Yeah, it would fall on the supply line, it would get paid out of the supply line. That's where it would get paid, it would get paid out of.
So, I asked, I don't think I received it, again, but, about a year ago, I asked for an update of all of the custodial equipment, because I've been in some schools and I've heard from people that the, the supplies that the custodians are using, the equipment is not good. So I asked for an update. We had, I think you guys paid a truck driver to go around and collect the data. So, not sure how that matches up, but we got some data, so I'm looking for that again, because I've been on this for a while.
Okay.
I'm very concerned that we have all of the money that we've had, and we don't have the proper custodial supplies, meaning, uh, equipment. We should have the top-of-the-line equipment, period. I don't see anything in here about that. Am I gonna get that tomorrow with the other stuff? Is that, so the custodial department head is whoever that new gentleman is. I would assume that he presented a, something to his boss, Mr. Pacico, and then Mr. Pacico submitted it to you guys, but what I'm asking for is that maybe, where is it?
So, Mr. Aguirre, the, as, as Mr. Almeida said, in the maintenance side, a lot of the items are listed on that particular area because they're used by most of the departments in F and O. So the supplies, Mr. Clow and Maria Borges brought in their requests for equipment, whether it be floor scrubbers, extractors, other medium-to-high-ticket items as requests. And the, and the committee who vetted this, the superintendent, and said that everything that they needed to do their job was gonna be approved. So, it is in the, in the projections on the purchases, which would be in the maintenance and also on these line items.
But this line item is a hundred thousand dollars or less than last year. So, this one here-
But that may not be the line item with those, that equipment's coming out of. There are other larger line items that it would come out of.
And you're just saying it's under maintenance even though it's for custodial?
It's just, it's just a line item of where they land in the particular budget. It's got nothing to do with the service, it's F and O. The department itself, under my direction, all answered underneath those particular line items. So all the contractual services, if they're custodial or if they're somewhere else, they're in that line item.
So, it's confusing, so I apologize for being a little confused, but, the way I look at the budget is, this is custodial. So if a custodian needs certain things to run their, to do their job efficiently-
Yes.
I would expect those to be in the custodian account. If that was the case, personally, as one member, I would advocate for, and I have been for over a year, Superintendent can tell you, I've asked for this for over a year, that we need to have top-quality equipment so that they can do their jobs properly. I just don't see-
And as they arrive before the, there is equipment that's being bought now, and then there's a, equipment, some of this equipment will be bought next year. The items that we need additional funds for, but there is dollars now that are being used to purchase some of this equipment.
And where is that coming from?
So that's gonna come from ESR, Mr. Aguirre. I'm gonna take some, I'm gonna purchase the equipment from ESR.
Okay.
If I could just clarify, when Mr. Pacico and Mr. Clow came to the table, Ms. Borges, they had a list of equipment that they were requesting, supposedly, and one of the questions I asked was, what do, what do the custodians need in order to do their job effectively? Some of the equipment, what I heard was some things was malfunctioning or had aged out. So, I asked Mr. Clow and Ms. Borges to sit, to go over what were the immediate needs, and to make sure they created a list of anything they needed in order to do their job, so that we could order that immediately.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't the school committee approve funds out of ESR and the like?
Right. We haven't, we haven't submitted the list yet.
Correct.
But they, I asked them to go through that, and whatever we could fund this year to bring forth those contracts for this year, and then additional, but if they need, let's say, a scrubber in order to do their work, they should have a scrubber to do their work.
I, I, believe me, I totally agree with it. I'm just trying to look at the process of how this goes, and where does the school committee sit when it comes time for making these type of decisions, to at least supporting it? I haven't had a subcommittee, on, on facilities now, I haven't had a subcommittee to talk about this, I haven't been able to say whether it makes sense to do, you know, hire the, to get this piece of equipment versus another. Do we need six-hundred-thousand-dollar tractor, do we need, you know, whatever? Like, I haven't been part of those discussions. But it seems to me, based on what I'm hearing now, is that a lot of these balls are in the way, and we're making decisions, and the school committee-
There's nothing that's, there's nothing that's gonna be purchased without coming to the school committee. I don't have that ability, so we wouldn't do that.
But, so-
The items are being put together by those who do the work-
Okay.
-to decide the model, the make, and, and the process of which that piece of equipment's gonna be used.
I thought I heard you say, sir, that you had, some of the stuff was coming in. That's what I thought-
If I misspoke, meaning, it's gonna be bought, uh, put in before this budget. So this budget is July after July.
Right.
Between now and July, we got quite a bit of time that we can have that subcommittee meeting, purchase this equipment, because most of this equipment, I'm gonna say half of this equipment is not gonna be used till the summer. The rest of it will be used from now until then. The day-to-day equipment that, that is either outdated, obsolete, or is needing repair.
Yeah, and somebody said, I don't know who it was, that said, I don't know the names, the assistant talked to the director, they committed, they-
I said that.
They did something, and then they gave it to Ms. Pacico. Did anybody have a meeting with all, the whole department, Madam Superintendent? Did you have a meeting with, just to be clear, so I, I want you to answer the question that I've, so-
Yep. I, I had a meeting with, during the budget process, with Mr. Pacico and his team. At that meeting, I asked Mr. Pacico, Mr. Clow, and Ms. Borges to sit down. They, they said that some of the equipment was not in good working order. So I said, I want you to sit down, I want you to go over all the things that we need, the immediate needs, and the long, short-term and long-term, so that we can put a list together of things that our custodians need, so that they can do their job effectively.
And they, then, and your follow-up with them was, you met with them all present, so everyone's on board? Does everyone on that agree with it, like to say?
They were all in the room. Everybody was speaking freely, so-
No, I mean with the submission. So when I get the papers, I'm assuming from, Mr. Almeida's gonna say, here's the submission of what they wanted.
Well, I would say before Mr. Almeida gets that submission, we need to have a follow-up meeting to go over exactly what it is that, the short-term and the long-term needs are, so that we can bring before the-
Right, because I think, what you're saying, I think we're saying the same thing. The supplies, the equipment is terrible, it should have been done years ago. We all agree. All I'm suggesting is that the school committee does have a place at the table-
Absolutely.
-to help with that. And that could mean sometimes people don't like it when you ask questions, but if we ask questions and we do what we need to do, we're all gonna be better off. The kids are gonna be better off, the custodians are gonna be better off. So I don't know anything about a scrubber. I don't know anything.
Mm-hmm.
But I'd like to have a meeting where I sit down and say, the people that work for you say, that one makes sense, this one doesn't make sense, that's not cost-effective. You know what I mean?
Absolutely.
Here in this building, we got one hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for a robot to clean the floors. We told, we were told it's gonna be great, whatever. I don't know, if it is so great, why don't we, you know, ask it for the answer, but, these are the kind of discussions I'd like to have at subcommittee. I think they'd be fruitful, and I think at the end of the day, we'd all be in agreement. We have lousy equipment, we need to do a better job. I just wanna make sure every person has a seat at the table and can actually say, no, I think this makes no sense, because pushing back is not a bad thing. I think it's gonna get us all to a better place. And that's, when I look at this, I'm like, this is woefully, this, there's just something missing, is what I feel. So if I vote yes for this budget, I'm not sure what it means for that discussion we just had. So I'd like to, between now and the time we approve it, either have a subcommittee meeting or have a discussion about it, or when we get to maintenance, maybe you'll tell me about the other ones.
Sure.
But I think we're on the same page with what we want, it's just how do we get there? With that, I yield. Thank you.
Anything further on custodial? Okay, hearing none?
Actually, sorry, I had one question. Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Aguirre.
On the additions, because I keep on not finding the paper. Was there any requested positions that are on here that are not funded?
No.
For custodial?
Nope.
And the other ones you'll talk about?
Yes.
Thank you. I yield.
Hearing no, no further discussion, next item is facilities and maintenance-dash-admin. Look at that first. Does anybody have questions on facilities and maintenance-dash-admin? Ms. Rogics?
I just, I'm looking at the unfunded positions, and so my question is the same. You've got one, two, three, four security officers that are unfunded, so I'm just wondering how that impacts what you plan on doing, what that looks like for, you know, the future of that department, how that impacts the other folks that are doing this work. It's under facilities and operations over here.
Yeah, I'm just getting myself there.
There's a, because it's labeled as, where's it labeled? It's labeled, it's after-
Yeah, I've got it.
Yeah, I'm showing these.
So, so we have open TBDs that are funded?
It's all in security maintenance, they're all under that tab.
Same tab.
Yeah.
Yep. So I'm sorry, what, the question?
It was, you have five security officers that are unfunded, that you, I, I don't know if those are the only positions that you asked for, or if there were other ones, but there's five that are listed under unfunded positions. And so, you know, when we talk about safety and security, of course, you know, as a parent as well, I get nervous that I see, we have five security officers that were requested. I'm assuming we requested because it was something that you felt were needed, but they were unfunded. So I'm just wondering how that impacts your department moving forward? Are people stretched thin? What does that look like?
So we have nine positions that are not filled.
Okay.
And the rationale behind new positions is, I can't fill my old positions yet. These positions have been vacant all year. So, until we fill these nine positions, we won't know whether or not we need the other new positions. So the, they're sitting on the back burner, and hopefully, we will be able to fill these a lot hinges on, you know, collective bargaining agreements, things like that. So, I, I think that we are moving in the right direction with safety and security. Mr. Ventura, director is doing a great job, he's, he is neck-deep in it every day, and he'd like to see these positions filled, so that we can take a good look at the district and see where we are with, you know, our, our offices.
So I, I get that rationale, that, that makes sense, that we have nine that were unfilled, so I'm not gonna ask for five new ones, because I couldn't fill these nine, so I don't even know what we can do yet with these nine. But somebody asked for them.
So originally, we wanted to be sure that we had one at every elementary school, we wanted to be sure that we had an adequate amount of security people at our middle schools, and also at the high school. And as, as Mr. Ventura is going through the building, Durfee, you know, he's having, he's made some changes in, in the policies there, and he's still looking to fill these other positions, so that he can see what is left from this group that we can spread to the elementary level, and possibly augment the security officers at the middle school.
I guess it's just more of a process comment than that, like, somebody still asked for five-
We did, we did.
-positions, right? Even though we didn't have nine?
We did, and it wasn't a point of them being denied as much as it was the fact that we really don't have direction right now, as to, you know, we would like, putting numbers against a school name is how we get, got to that area. Now we'll have the opportunity to see where these positions fall out. We have more security at RPA than we've ever had, and that wasn't in the cards, but it's, it's an immediate need, so we're taking care of that. And then, when these, as these offices come in to play, we'll place them where we feel we need them. And then at that point, as we get closer to a, a full complement of funded, if we need to, we feel that we will come back to the superintendent and say, you know, we may need two or three more to do what we need to do.
So my question, does my comment make sense, though? It's sort of like, why did we ask for them if we, if we didn't need, not that we didn't need them, because we do need them, but if we have nine positions that are open, that's where I was just sort of stuck on, like, why did we ask for them in the first place?
I think that it was not a, a no, it was a hold until we, trying to fill the nine, and then gauge, because it might be five, and it might be more, but it wasn't a no, it was just, let's try to fill those nine, look at the impact, and then go from there it was just, let's try to fill those nine, look at the impact, and then go from there and add. So certainly-
Which that-
Security is priority.
Which that makes sense, but that's where I go back to, I think if we have that information ahead of time, then that answers, you know, my question, and then that sort of eliminates the need for me to even ask, like, "Oh, okay, I see why this happens, I see how that played out," and then, you know, I, I do much better when I can read information, that's how I process stuff. I know not everybody else does that in the same way, but for me, that would be much more helpful. And lord knows, we're not just catering to what, you know, how Sauer processes stuff, but it would be helpful to have that backup. I yield.
Mr. Corey?
Yes, Ms. Pacheco?
Yes.
I just want to say, do you have any outstanding requests?
I could use a new lawnmower at my house.
I hear you.
But other than that, no.
Me too.
Well, I just want to take a moment to praise you again, Mr. Pacheco, because you've been on the job for quite a while, and there's been a lot of transformation in that time period. We've seen Watson completely transformed as a building. It looks wonderful. We've seen the stone, we've seen a brand-new high school get built beside the new Morton, and I know that you've overseen so many of these projects, and I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that, and say thank you for your commitment to the Four River Public Schools. I yield.
Thank you, but it took an awful lot of people to get that stuff done.
Mr. Aguirre?
The, we're in the lines, can you tell me about where the maintenance stuff that we were talking about would be? Can you tell me, direct me to the line items?
So if, if you go to the maintenance section, right after the salary items?
Yep.
That's when all of the heavy-duty items come in. So heating, electricity, and then all the way down the line, the heating, electricity, you have office equipment, furniture maintenance, contracted services, preventive maintenance, all of those items is where all this stuff would be pulled from.
So when you're talking about purchasing equipment, what, what line would that fall?
Probably under office equipment, furniture maintenance. It could be under preventive maintenance also, if we're, if we're picking up equipment, you know, the contingency item.
Yep, so just, and maybe we're going to get this info, but I don't see it here. The back out of, where did we come up with building materials and supplies, $400,000? Like, I would like to know what is in that line, not necessarily right now, but to, to know what does that mean? So within that, we have $150,000 for lawn mowers, whatever it is that, the breakout is where I would be looking, whether it's here or through a subcommittee, so that we can kind of get a feel for-
So what-
We don't have unlimited money.
But I would agree that in a subcommittee meeting, we could give you those items broken up much easier, and then the discussion would help to understand-
Right.
-why those items are put in those spots. We can do that.
We haggle with it, we come up with something, then we refer something to the, that's the way it, it should go, in my mind. The electricians you have in here, it's like, I know we had talked about at a subcommittee meeting, which I was important to do, that one of those electricians, I believe, was going to go to the information, the CIO's line, so that he was dedicated for that. And I see it under here, and I'm wondering why.
So we don't have, so in that same discussion, we were talking about adding another electrician, and that, that we would, we would shift the low voltage, one of the low voltage electricians over to that. The other electrician didn't come through fruition, it's not here. We didn't hire that additional electrician, which would be electrician number five. So we've allowed one of the low voltage electricians to be used, both Mr. Cabral and myself have conversations, a minimum of once or twice a week, about the personnel that he needs, whether it's carpenters or electrician to go over. And that electrician goes over as much as he's asked to, unless he's in the middle of something on the opposite side. But there is a, we are sharing that electrician, we're sharing, it's not exclusively over to tech, but we are sharing that person.
So out of the four people you have here, you said three of them are low voltage? I didn't think we had three.
No, 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 two of them, two of them are low voltage, two of them are, are straight electricians, that don't handle any of that.
At one point, you had three low voltage?
No.
So how do we have one to give to him?
We didn't, there was, we had said we were adding another electrician during that conversation. There was a, if I'm not mistaken, there was a job description that was put forth for the-
From him?
From him, from Scott. And then, we had said that finding that person is more difficult than finding an electrician. We would advertise for an electrician, and then we would share the low voltage one. At that point, he could have it as long as he needed it, if there's work every day, and if not, that electrician could find work back in maintenance. So it would be a shared position. But we never hired that fifth electrician.
I agree with around three-quarters of that, because I was there as part of it.
Yes.
At the time, we had two low voltage folks.
We've never had more than two.
So we had two. Mr. Cabral came before the subcommittee and asked for a position called, like, wiring. He had some other name of it that really didn't make any sense to, it made sense, but it was like, we have a person who's currently working that can do that job.
Yes.
We agreed, superintendent agreed, you agreed at the meeting, that we were going to take the low voltage guy who was capable of doing all of his work, and transfer him directly under the org chart for him. Therefore, you would have a vacancy for a low voltage guy, or just rehire a, a full electrician. That's the way that I recall that happening.
I don't, I'm not saying it didn't happen that way. The way I recall it was that we were going to move that person when we hired another electrician to fulfill, to fill that vacant spot. I hear what you're saying, and, and if that's something that happened, then that's my-
Yeah, I mean, we can go back and look at it, it's not the end of the world, but making it right. I just want to make it right now.
Yes.
So when I'm looking at this, I say, well, my first question is, the two low, low voltage guys, are they licensed yet?
Uh, one is, they're both close, they're both-
Close, so-
One is closer than another.
And you know my feeling on that?
I do.
The org chart said, the job description said they'd be licensed, so-
I do.
If I just say, "Okay, back off on that, Kevin, because they're working on it." They're still not licensed. So my concern is that we should have a position under Mr. Cabral's budget called low voltage electrician, and it can still work under him. We didn't need to change the job description, but he would be the one doing the interviews, the hiring, and so it's sort of off your plate. If you're going to stay with these guys, he just has to record, when he comes up here, he's not going to say, "I have a vacant position as an electrician." Guaranteed, nobody's going to tell me that, because I haven't seen it. That's the problem, is at that time, we said we were adding five bodies in the electrician world. Right now, we have four in the budget.
Yes.
So I think the missing link is, when Mr. Cabral comes up, he's going to say, "I need to have that position," because either one of these guys is going to move into it and apply for it, or he should have already filled it, is, because he's got a lot of wiring needs, the way that I see it. When you go down to the end where it says, "Water CSO," so we pay the city $525,000-
Yes.
-for water.
Yes.
I know we, I mentioned this before about trash, and where is the trash amount? And do we pay for trash, and how much do we pay? We've been asking, I've been asking this for three and a half years on the city side, so-
Yes, so we do pay-
I've gotten answers that it was-
Yeah, we do pay for trash.
Thirty-five grand or 40 grand or something like that, but I don't see it in this budget. Am I missing it?
Um, if I'm not mistaken, it's in-
It falls under the contracted services line, Mr. Aguirre.
What is it?
It falls under the contracted services line item.
So we have a line item that's specific for water and sewer, we don't have one for trash?
No.
Waste disposal?
No.
I would recommend that, I mean, it's truth in advertising, it makes sense, so whatever the number was, for over a year now, we've also been negotiating with the city, apparently, for the end-of-year agreements, and we're still waiting for answers on that, too. But if we're not paying the fair shot for what the trash is, we should pay, just like the city just has to make a decision, and then do the same thing for the, for the other folks, nonprofits and, and all that stuff. So I even want to be fair. If we're not paying our fair share, then you should be coming to us and say, "Pay it." But I don't see the, the line item. I don't see, you said contractual services, and I don't see a comparison from year to year. Are we increasing or ex, or decreasing our contracted services over this year?
Increasing.
You said increase?
Yes.
Do you know how much is it, is this, like, is it a line item, or is this just currently happening in the current budget, so you're?
Say that again, Mr. Aguirre.
Are you, are we increasing our contracted services in the current budget, which therefore leads to an increase in this number?
Yes, plus, plus we have contracts that are contractually increased from year to year, so that's the reason why, for the increase.
Right. That's a concern of mine, of how much outsourcing we're doing. Maybe we could get some comparative data on, on that. The big one was, I think it was, the two, that's $2.7 million in the contracted services line?
Yes.
And that's where ENE falls under?
That's where ENE falls, and a lot of, of the other ones are.
Yeah, I would just like a breakout of that, so we can get to see what that is. I mean, it's a lot of money that we're paying them, and I still don't know exactly what ENE does. Can you just tell me, do they clean vents? Are they responsible for making sure-
Cleaning ductwork?
No, not for cleaning ductwork.
So- They do some PM work, and they do major repairs. There are two pipe fitters that are in the district every day, and provide emergency services to us on the weekends and nights, and they are responsible for, there's a list in their contract of everything they're responsible for by school.
Cleaning ducks wasn't, isn't one of them?
Not cleaning ducks.
Yeah. And do you have, do they, what do they sign in with when they come in? Like, are they here all day? Like, you say they're here all day, so-
They're here for eight hours a day.
Can you tell me what that means?
They are a seven to 3:30 group that are here in our buildings every day.
So if I was to come here at 3:15 and drive around and say, "Show me where the ENE guys are,"
We could find them, absolutely.
You or George could say, "Oh, that's where they're at."
Absolutely.
Yep. The org chart is, I guess this is a comment for all of them, I don't think these are org charts like we're, at least like I was asking for. An org chart is who falls underneath who, the way that I envision it, because this is like, everybody sort of straight, and then you have, is transportation even on here? Yes, so they're one of your-
They would be under the master one. So I, I don't know where-
What I'm looking at is, so I'm looking at your org chart, so-
Yes.
It should show, transportation, for instance, has one block, and then within that, there's three people that work there, you know, underneath them? And then, maintenance, the same, you know?
Yes. I have that org chart.
Yeah.
You don't have it, I have it.
No, I, I think that you probably do have it, because I think we've had it before when you wanted the conversions or whatever. But it's not in here. This is what we got in here, it's kind of confusing related to it. Two more questions. One is, you mentioned lawn mowers, do we have storage?
Storage for-
We have storage, we're paying for storage. Do we have any places that we store our-
That storage, that storage is, is all of our supplies, that's distribution.
So if we had snow blowers, where do they, where do they get stored?
The snow blowers get stored-
Off-site or in-site?
Um, depending on, the snow blowers are stored at the schools, and the equip, the other equipment is stored at the, at the base building.
And if we got new snow blowers, and they would go to schools or to the-
I have new snow blowers that are sitting at different buildings. The spares, yes, that are not being used.
Yep. And another one of my issues was the laborer, we've been talking about for a while.
Yes.
Is the laborer been hired?
So the laborer has not been hired. We're also changing, if you look under maintenance, you'll see a couple of conversions.
I see laborer open, open TBD?
Right, but if you go to, to the laborer position, just before the one we were looking at, so just above total salaries, there's a highlighted area-
Yep.
-open to be, so there's a plumber converted to appliance repair. So it's something we're trying to bring in-house, we do an awful lot of kitchen equipment repair and outsourced. Two issues with that, a lot of times, the availability of the company, we're kind of at their mercy, and the second piece is, is that the repairs are extremely expensive. Some of that work we can bring in-house with a technician. We have enough kitchens and enough equipment that would warrant this position. Filling the plumber's position is almost impossible, so therefore, at this time, that position would be better utilized as, as an appliance repair, and then the steam fitter conversion would be to an organized laborer. So we're looking for two layers of labors, we're looking for a laborer who has actually been, you know, doing that kind of work, so high-end labor that has licenses to operate equipment, to set up, licensed to set up stage and different things like that. That person would be much more valuable to work as a side-by-side, as opposed to a helper. The laborer position that will, that's listed that we haven't filled yet is a straight laborer, that would be a runner, someone who's going to clean up after tradespeople, that's that other position. So one of them, we already have in the budget, and this would be an additional one.
Yep.
Because we're getting, as we look at some of the applications, some of them are very, are not at all equipped to do the work we want to do, and then we, every once in a while, get someone who is way over what we need, and they would never accept the salary of that laborer. So I think we have the opportunity with two positions to have two individuals who can help the trap, the tradesmen and, and that department with projects that we can keep in-house.
Yep, so I would assume that that's going to come before us for a job description.
It will, it will, yes.
The $40,000 laborers, I just, it doesn't sit well with me, because that's been over a year, we can go back and look at it.
Mm-hmm.
We have people that can do basic labor, kids out of, out of this particular school, construction crap, you know? How the heck we can't fill that is not, I just think we haven't tried to fill it personally, but there's no reason why we haven't filled it with-
I'm going to tell you that I haven't tried as much as I should, that lies on me, and-
You agree with me that we could potentially get a nice opportunity for-
And that was the original intent, and I, and I believe that that was the intent when I brought it forward, was that we wanted to.
I would highly recommend it.
Yep.
People need work, we need, we need to, the only issue I would have with the organized labor, and then you said we can't find a plumber. Well, no kidding, because the three plumbers that are listed, or two plumbers that are listed here, $72,000 and $76,000, one of which I probably gets more money because he's a lead, even though there's not, is that why?
No, it's not a lead.
What is that, just a steps or something?
It may be longevity, it may be something else.
So $76,000 for a licensed plumber that we can't find, and we might have a organized laborer for $69,000? Like, that's the problem, is the salary. That's why we can't find anybody, and so I don't know when that comes forth, like, unless you come before us with a higher plumbing pay or electrician, I don't, I just don't-
Well, they, they're union positions, so, then the, once we negotiate a contract, that's what's going to dictate those numbers.
I know, and we're up for that, so like, I've said the same thing every, every year, that we, if we're not going to pay people, we're not going to, you know, get them.
Absolutely.
The, do you get any reports from the grounds, and like, how that's going with all of the new people?
I do, I do, and there's a lot of, again, for the facilities meeting, we do have that comparison that we, that you would ask for. We have that comparison that's ready to go. We also have a lot of, of documentation, both in, in photos and also in writing of, of the work that's going on. There's a lot, just Durfee High School athletic fields, for instance. I mean, we have, I, I don't want to say miles, but we have a lot of netting that has to go up and down, trying to preserve the netting. So at the end of the seasons, it comes back down, back up. That's a lot of work that wasn't there before. Nets would stay up to catch birds year-round.
What I would just ask is if you could send us something as a committee?
Sure.
It might help to us, at least for me, it would help, to know, here's some of the projects, we have nothing extravagant, but here's how we, we just added six positions at 60 for some thousand. Here's what we're getting from that, and that we don't have to spend the money on the outsourcing of all those things. To me, that makes sense. The transportation department, I asked this a while back about the secretaries all having a 7D license. Has that finally happened?
So our transportation director, um, Deb Cavallo's been working and asking around with her people and also with others, um, to gain the licenses. Where we do have some people in, uh, distribution that have those licenses. And we're gonna encourage them to, um, to as many people as we can, cause we know we can use them. Uh, our courier vans are busy all the time, a lot of, of set routes, but they do do a lot of work in the course of a day. And, and there are times, uh, when vacations and, and sick time come up, we, that we could use extra hands. So she is working hard on that particular piece.
I was referring though to the secretary, so...
We've asked, we've asked, but again, that's...
So four years ago, I recall, we were gonna add a secretary. I made this suggestion at the time, and the whole committee supported it, and you, you supported yourself, to add to the job description that they will maintain a seventy license. And I haven't seen it yet, and that's, that's what my question is. If we have a, a job description that says this is when they get hired, this is what they should be doing, including the director? So that if we ever needed, we could, you know, like you said, these people are out. It makes a lot of sense. We all supported it at the time, but it's been years.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you it's not in the job description. Absolutely not.
And if it's not, then somebody took it out in a public meeting?
It's not.
In a public meeting, we voted to change it.
It was, I don't believe it was in. If, I, I could be wrong.
Go back and research if you can.
I will look and see.
I wanna make sure we're on the same page.
Sure.
In my opinion, it makes sense.
Yep.
And if it's not, then superintendent should send it to us and say, "It's not." If it makes sense, we should add it.
Sure.
I'm of the belief that we said this in a public meeting, that we would add it to the job description. So therefore, we'd have multiple people that could, um, drive them. And did I ever get an answer on the, uh, the amount of the, other than that is included for the trash? Do we know what that is total? Like, how much do we pay the city for trash? Do we know that?
I couldn't tell you right now. We're in second quarter of, um, this year. And I, I really don't have a handle right now as to what that number is.
You could send it to us, though. If you could send us an update.
Yeah, well, I can do that.
All right. I yield. Thank you.
Anything further for facilities, maintenance, campus services, maintenance and security department? And transportation, we went over that. Hearing none. Let's go to the ELL department. ELL. Does anybody have any questions? Ms. Rodriks?
I'm just trying to understand these conversions. Um, they say community facilitator converted to ELL mainstream teacher. And that's on here twice, but it's not on the list of conversions. There's a new position, I'm confused.
So my understanding about the community facilitator positions is that the ESL department historically had two of them. They were open. They have been open since I started. Um, I've been analyzing the need for the department to have community facilitator positions. It seems a bit superfluous since Pace has community facilitator positions. Every school has community facilitator positions. And I don't wanna keep positions on the books just for the sake of keeping them on the books. Um, I'm happy to revisit those in future years if we feel that we have more of a need in my department. But right now, that's not where the most need is, given that we have lots of people in the district working on that. So that money for two of them, because they are low, more, they are not, they don't earn as much as teachers. Two of them become one teacher. That's my understanding of the conversion.
Correct.
That two of them become one teacher?
Yes.
Okay. That, again, I think that's where my confusion lies, cause the way it's, it looks here is that it's two community facilitator positions that are converted to what looks like two mainstream, ELL mainstream teachers at Green.
It's just one.
It's just one, okay. But then it wasn't in the list of conversions on, like in this front section?
It's because of the cost. So because the cost is different, so the teacher would be included on the program improvements. And on the bottom in the cost, cost containment section would be the two community facilitators.
Yeah, so I see that here now that you've explained it. Again, I think this is where it goes back to, like, having an explanation would be really helpful. Because I look at that, and to me, it looks like we're converting two community facilitators to two ELL teacher positions, which doesn't make sense funding-wise, right? That, that doesn't add up. Um, but then it's not on the conversion, and then it's not here, so thank you for clarifying that. And then I'm assuming that there was more, well, actually, I don't wanna assume anything. Um, there's one position on here that looks like it was unfunded, and that was a DLE coordinator? I don't think I even know what that was.
Correct. Dual-language education.
Dual-language education, okay. Um, were there other positions that were not funded? And how does that impact, same question I ask everybody else. And how does that impact what you would like to do for your department moving forward?
The only other thing that I requested was an ESNON at Pace. And we are in, that, that actually does exist as a teaching position right now. And so my need is to have consistency at Pace over the summer. And teachers don't work over the summer. So having that as a, as a teacher, um, I was hoping to convert it to an ESNON. But Superintendent Ponce and I are in conversations about whether we might do an MOU or something that would allow us to have consistency for that person to work over the summer, um, and not have to hire individual people in and out of Pace in the summer to screen our multilingual learner students.
I know it's busy over there, over the summer especially, while you're trying to do that work. So that's why I'm asking, how does that impact you moving forward?
So I think we're gonna just, I think we will resolve that. We don't have the exact resolution yet, but I anticipate that we will find a way for that to happen.
We have to do that with our bargaining unit.
Correct.
Okay. I yield on that one.
Anything further?
Mr. Aguirre.
Just on that same issue. So you said you have, uh, to do, at the Pace Center is to do screenings?
Yes.
What are the qualifications to be a screener?
You need to hold a teaching license. So I've reached out to neighboring districts about how they handle this. Um, some districts, it is a teaching position, some districts, it is an ESNON. Some districts utilize retired teachers. Historically, we have had this as a teaching position. And then we have hired people over the summer to just come in. Um, I'm just looking for a little more consistency over the summer. So it's not, one teacher does it throughout the school year, and then I'm hiring all different people to do it throughout the summer.
And you have it vacant. Is that what you're saying?
It is currently vacant, yes.
Is it, how long has it been vacant?
Since it was vacated in, uh, last June.
So what have we done all year?
Uh, the coordinators have been screening students. Megan Prizio, who is our assessment specialist, has been screening students. And we have someone, uh, who is coming in part-time to screen students.
And is, I don't know who that is. She's asking, what was that you said about coordinators? Who's that?
The coordinators are, we have two curriculum coordinators in our budget. Um, and they have been doing hours at Pace as well.
So is there a, um, agency that does this? On a contracted basis like other departments have done, because...
To my knowledge, no.
It just seems like, here we are, we're saying it's a teaching position and this and that. And then I'm looking at the salaries, and you got a hundred and eight and a hundred and one thousand to do screening?
So they are subbing in right now to do some screening. That is not their primary purpose. They've done maybe four hours, five hours of screening, um, on any given week. And we, um, we are prioritizing direct service to students. It's very hard for me to explain to a parent that I have a teacher full-time testing kids when I have no one providing services in buildings.
I don't disagree. But if, if, just looking at it as a budget, so somebody, if we had a teacher that was working forty hours a week, they would be doing forty hours of screening?
Um, that's unlikely, no.
So what would they do otherwise?
They would, they, well, I mean, at certain times of the year, there's a need to screen pre-K students. Not sure what that's gonna look like. The state of Massachusetts is releasing new guidance on that any day now. Um, we do have a large need for pre-K, for kindergarten screening come this time of the year. Other than that, they often would assist with parent center, family engagement, um, initiatives. They need to, this person also needs to be able to reach out to families, to be able to explain our services, um, to be able to get consent from families. We also, this person can handle our opt-outs. Really, where we are, Mr. Aguirre, I wanna be totally transparent, is that we are really in a place where we're trying to figure out where everybody's role is and what, how we can best maximize everybody's skillset.
Yeah, I, I totally understand. It's just, when you had said that the, the coordinators are helping for five, ten hours a week, five hours. So in my head, I'm saying, okay, so there's ten hours of testing. What would the rest of the thirty hours be? Who's picking up that slack if they were full? Like, it just, we wanna maximize everybody's, so if we're gonna pay a teacher, potentially you might pay a top step teacher if they were high, you know, in a high-needs section. That means you're paying eighty-five, ninety thousand dollars for the position. And if that was the case and they're screening five kids a week, we maybe should do something different.
They're definitely screening more than five, and so I do have that data tracked. Since in the past three months, we've had over two hundred students. Just so you know, a screening of a student who, um, is not a newcomer can take up to two hours. So that it can be a pretty extensive process if the student has any kind of English. We're also hearing from the state of Massachusetts that we may not be accepting out-of-state screeners. So we're looking at potentially even needing more time for somebody to screen. But I think the thought behind an MOU would be that some of those hours would then become spread out over the summer. So then we wouldn't be additionally hiring another person for another line item of summer screenings.
Yeah, no, I, I think it makes sense. And you had talked about the issue, uh, last meeting about the Durfee positions. I still don't feel really good about that conversation. And I think we, we need a good picture of where, where we're at and what we need. And you had talked about, well, we can't fill a position, so let's not put it in the budget. But I disagree with that. Because if we need the positions, if in a perfect world, we could fill all the positions, that's how we can create a budget that's sustainable that we know, in order to do this job right, we need X amount. So when we don't add five positions that we know are needed to service the kids, that's four hundred thousand dollars that we don't have in the budget accounted for in next year as we go forward. So we keep on hearing that, not from you, we heard it from Mr. Chico, we hear it again. It, it's a zero-based budget. If we did a zero-based budget that says, "In order to teach all of our L kids, we need X amount of dollars", that's what should be in the budget. If we can't fill the positions, then we have to do whatever. But I don't see that here. So what I see us doing is, we have winners and losers in the budget. Some people win one year, and then they win every year. Other people lose every year because they're losing positions. And I'd rather say, let's just make sure we know what I needs our request, so we can sustain it, so...
So as of right now, I, I just wanna clarify as much as I can about those positions that are not being funded at Durfee. As of right now, when I looked across all of the schools, I went for the number of positions that we know we need to meet compliance. I will be completely transparent, and I will say to you, compliance is a floor. It is certainly not a ceiling. And we know that we're getting more students. That's just if you follow the trends of MLL students. It's available, it's public data. The MLL student population across the country is increasing. It's certainly increasing in Massachusetts, and it's certainly increasing in Fall River. Of course, it's impossible to predict. I could get two kids tomorrow, I could get fifty kids tomorrow. That's tough to know. So how we worked it out at the district level was to think about what's our minimum compliance? Where will we add? You know, the wish list is there. If we continue to get more students, we don't know. We might get more students at Durfee. However, we might get more students at middle school all of a sudden. I have no way of knowing what the age range of our immigrant population is gonna be. So I, I really feel that it's best to hold on some of those positions right now and hopefully have some latitude to add as needed. And, and send those positions where they need to be.
I understand. The district middle school coach, do they work for you?
So I believe that that is the, the vision of what we are going to do, that they will be at central office, because we had middle school coaches at all three schools this year. You can see that two of those were cut. So Cuss will no longer have a position. Morton will no longer have a position. Talbot's position, which is the only one that is filled, will be converted down to district. That person will service all three of the schools.
So when I look at, um, the org chart, the little bubbles and stuff, the district middle school coach under your department should fall under you?
I think so. Uh, Dr. Curly, do you have a different vision?
No, I believe, I believe that is, I think that, um, if it's not that way in the org chart, I think that that's something...
It's not that way in the budget. I, we don't have an org chart for them.
Because it's, it's listed under one school. Is that why?
It says at the bottom, interventionist coach ESL at Talbot will be the district middle school coach. And that just begs the question of, if it's a district middle school coach working under you, it should fall under the one pager that has your budget. Would be, in my opinion.
That's fair.
You know, I think it makes sense, but like I said, I, this is it, one page. That's all we got for your department. So did you ask for other things that are not in here that...
The only thing is the dual-language coordinator. That's it.
What the one that was there. Thank you. I yield.
Anything further for ELL? Thank you. Next is the finance department. Mr. Almeida. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Almeida? Mr. Aguirre.
I don't, do I see any on here that, you have any requests or not, or how did?
I did not across anything.
And you're fully, so you're fully staffed, is what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
And is there any, anything glaring in this budget with any changes up-down that we should know about?
No, it's level-funded. The, when I say level-funded, my positions are, are, it's level service for positions and level-funded for dollars and all the line items.
So if there's any differences, you just would find it from somewhere else to correct some of these salaries?
Yes.
The, um, one of the things I would just, the thing where we get it on the computer, uh, the, streamlining the payments and, what's the word, um, is that in here? Is that in here somewhere under?
You talking about DocuSign, Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Yep.
And that would be under supplies, classroom supplies?
Yes.
How much do we pay for that, do you know?
Um, we increased it, so, um, this year, it actually went up more because we have, uh, we've created more of the, um, you know, batches, so to speak. So be, so we were, so our original subscription that we had was for, I believe it was for a thousand or so a year. Uh, we're actually doing that more than that now, so we increased the subscription. I think we ended up going from four thousand to like seven thousand or something for the year.
And you, you take the, uh, payment for all of the departments, like special ed?
Just, just, just mine, just mine. Cause I was, I was the department that originally started the DocuSign, uh, process on the school side. Um, and so SPED pays for their, their own. Uh, this year was the first year that SPED, uh, came in with the DocuSign process on their end.
And, and payroll, like the payroll manager and the clerks, like what is, what is their role?
What is their role?
Like, is it just a, to, do they just move payroll, like the document, papers? Or do they actually do any analysis? Is that what the manager does?
So essentially, the, the payroll folks, they, they check in with all the schools. They get all the documents from all the schools in order to process all the payrolls. Um, they verify that the information that's being sent over is sent over properly, that the rates, the rates there are proper for the folks that they're getting the information from. They put in all the information. The payroll supervisor supervises all the staff, ensures that everything is in the payroll that needs to be in the payroll. Uh, she also is the person that's responsible for all the MTRS filings that we do on a monthly basis. She does, she reviews all the enrollments with MTRS. And she does other managerial tasks that, that are asked.
And under legal services is under you, but I would assume, assume that that's...
It's for, that's for the, that's for the whole school. Uh, that part of that is the salary of our legal counsel here. And the rest is for any potential legal items that come up for the year.
So that's not necessarily under finance per se? That probably, it makes it look like you're spending in your department three hundred thousand dollars in legal.
Yeah, no, I'm not, no, I'm not, I'm not. But it's, it's just, it's always, it's always just fallen under my, it's always fallen under my area, and that's where it was coded, but, you know, it's general school department.
Yeah, I mean, I would make a recommendation that that goes under the superintendent, so it's more truth in advertising for people that look at the budget. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Corey?
Yeah, Mr. Almeida, how long have you been with our district?
Uh, since two thousand and eleven, Mr. Corey.
And here we are in two thousand and twenty-four. I really wanna thank you because year after year, you seem to, you're the head accountant for this district. It's a big budget, lot of line items, tremendous amount of line items. And you have a handle on, on a lot of it. And, and, and that's not an easy task. Uh, so I'm, I'm very pleased with the overall performance. I don't have any questions because all the line items here seem to make a lot of sense to me. And I'm so happy that we've been able to retain you, because as far as retaining you as our chief accountant, then that means that we're sustaining, you know, the, the confidence and the commitment to the budget for Fall River Public Schools. Thank you again. With that, I yield, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next department up, human resource department. Anybody have any questions for the human resource department? Hearing none?
Actually, I have a question. This is maybe a comment.
Mr. Aguirre.
So, uh, I've said, um, I've said this in the past, that I think that we have a few departments that were, um, not high-functioning, let's just say. And, um, I've mentioned to the superintendent this multiple times, and it's gone nowhere, basically, that I believe when we look at the structure of this, this, this department, that we need a deputy superintendent to assist her with her work and move in this district. In addition to that, there's several departments that do not have a, an assistant superintendent that falls under them. So I think if we're a high-functioning district, we should have an org chart that says we have a superintendent. And then we have a layer of assistant superintendents, and under them is all of the departments. Human resources, maintenance, custodial, and all that other departments do not have anyone. And I still maintain to this day that we're missing an opportunity to create an organizational structure with an experienced, potentially an experienced person that could come in and assist the superintendent in moving this district and making non-high-functioning departments high-functioning. So I think it's still an issue, and I wish that the superintendent would act on it. I yield.
Hearing nothing further on human resources. I'll go to insurance. Does anybody have any questions about our insurance? Does anybody have any questions about our insurance? Hearing none?
Mr. Mayor? I was just waiting to see if anybody else had a question, so sorry.
No, you can go.
Thanks. So under unemployment, is that just a standard?
Yes.
Because I think I ask this every year, that what do we do when we don't have that many people collecting?
So historically, the number's been over 200,000. We've had years in the past where we've seen, you know, a little bit more turnover or we've had to do some cuts in the years past where the number's been higher. But 300,000 is a, is the standard number that we've used every year.
But it's safe, that's, that's a little over, like I don't think we're going to spend that. When I see the line item sick leave buyback, and this might be a question for different departments, but I consider sick leave buyback when a person retires. And when you read language in the contracts, especially specifically Maintenance, Custodial and Facilities that I've looked at personally, it, it does not indicate that if you leave, that you get paid. And I don't know, when that happens, if we pay somebody, does it come out of this line item or does it come out of the budget of the department that is paying that benefit?
So historically, what's happened is, though, as far as facilities and maintenance and those categories, they typically come out of the department. What comes out of here typically are the sick leave payments out for teachers and paraprofessionals and for clerks. That's typically what comes out of this line item.
So what I would request of the superintendent is to, once again, please review the language because it just makes zero sense to me. I've read the language in it. In the language in the contract for those departments, it states something along the lines of, if you leave, it doesn't say that if you leave, you quit, you just go get a job somewhere else, that you get paid your days. And then there may be other people that work that leave that don't get their days. So we're not consistent when it comes to how we pay people. And then that takes over to another, we're just not consistent, period. But we're not consistent when we pay people. Now, I've looked at the contract, I've looked at it, I've sent it to the superintendent. I've asked over and over, how the heck are we paying somebody that quit? We're paying them money. There's also times where we pay and HR has to go chasing money. I don't understand how this happens. But this one here for sick leave buyback is something that just totally doesn't sit well with me. If I'm wrong, please look at it and tell me that I'm wrong. But when you look at the language in the contract, it says if you quit, you will not get your sick time paid out. And why we do that for some and not for others is not, is not okay in my book. So I ask the superintendent to please look at it and report back. I yield, thank you.
Ms. Pereira?
Would that be something that's contract negotiated as far as payback for sick time?
Well, of course.
So if they're negotiating their contract and some, I'm just trying to think about it. If you have some workers who negotiated a contract where, hey, if they quit, they get paid their sick time, that was good negotiating because I know that if I quit my job, I'm going to get vacation time. I'm not going to get any accrued sick time. But there are contracts that do negotiate that in. Is that what the deal is? Is that why we have a discrepancy and some get it and some don't?
Contracts are done differently and they negotiate it differently. So I, you know, to speak to whether or not, you know, certain language is in a contract, you know, it's a historical thing, I would say, for the most part.
Right. But I mean, that's why they're getting paid, you know? So I would say good negotiating when that contract comes up again. If we feel that paying out sick time is something we want to deal with and I guess we deal with that at that time, you know? Anyway, with that, I yield.
Anything further, Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, I would agree with Ms. Pereira that contract language is very important. And it should be good. But we've got some people here that negotiate contracts that are super-negotiators, I guess. Because even when the language is clear, that you do not get paid, here in Fall River, you get paid. That's the problem. So that's what I want you to look at. The contract language is what it is, but if the contract language says they don't get paid, somebody please tell me why the hell they're getting paid. I yield.
We'll get clarification on that because I don't believe anybody's getting paid if they're not, if they're not allowed to get paid. But we'll get that information.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
That's a, sorry, that's a different ball of wax. If it's not in the contract, they should, that they are not going to get paid their sick time, then they shouldn't. So we should clarify that and make sure that's correct. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. Anything further? All right, next department up is the music department. Music department. Anybody have any questions about music? Hearing none?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead, Kev.
Just the same, the same type of question. For, I'm assuming we're going to get something from the director that explains it a little more than the one page.
You will get it.
Thank you, I yield.
Next department is parent and community engagement, title one. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped nursing, my fault. Nursing, anybody have any questions about nursing? About our nursing staff? Okay, hearing none. Parent and community engagement, title one. Anything on that for anybody? Thank you.
No, ahead.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Rodriks, go ahead.
No, there was just one position that was unfunded, so, you know, I go back to how does that impact the work that they do? I think it was in SNON. And were there any other positions?
The, the SNON was in relation to the ELL position.
Okay.
So that, that was that one.
Were there any other positions that they requested?
No.
Okay. I yield.
Did you say title one?
It says, I'm sorry, did I read it wrong? Yeah, the very end, title one. Parent and community engagement, title one. Mr. Aguirre.
I just don't know what that means because?
So it's just, it's labeled that way because most of the department is funded through title one positions. It's just how we've quoted it in the past. They should probably just be PACE, is what it should be.
I'm looking for the title one department. Like the director, they don't have a?
He, he falls under curriculum, so he's part of curriculum.
So it's not?
No, no.
Thank you, I yield.
Yep.
Anything further? Thank you. Next one up is early childhood. Early childhood. Hearing none?
Question?
Mr. Aguirre.
When was this budget done? February?
February.
So the amounts that are in here are the most current, or is they?
Yes.
Because I think, I don't necessarily think some of the salaries are accurate. I think we gave some raises and I don't see them here, but I could be wrong.
In, in particular, Mr. Aguirre?
The director?
So that salary is split, so it's partially funded through a grant and funded through operations?
Okay, so it's in two, it's in two line items?
Yeah, so it's the, you'll see the first line and about the fifth line down?
Yep, no, I see it, I think that?
That's the split.
To me, the best way would always be to put it in one and put like a comment that how they, it just makes it look like as if it's different, that's all.
Okay.
And I had asked, probably, I don't know, a while ago about the, it's the title one question, but I guess we're going to get that at some point for the information I asked for relative to the salary. They used to combine the position, I think, you're going to get that to us, I assume.
You're talking about, Dr. Ryan, as well as the social studies. We brought that to the committee last year during the budget process when we split those two positions. We had shared that with the committee, but we are seeing it to you again, yes.
And in early childhood, we're going to have a subcommittee meeting?
Yes.
On Thursday to discuss this and I'm looking forward to having the plans laid out in writing. I think we need to do more for that. So I would say this is one where we're going to have to increase it if we're going to increase the, but a lot of information was asked for, so I'm really anticipating a good meeting on Thursday. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Any, anything further on early childhood? Next agenda item is health and physical education. Health and physical education. Any questions on that section of the budget? Hearing none? School committee. That's our, that's our budget and no increases, I believe. Anything on the school committee? Hearing none? Next item up is the special education department. Special education department. Anybody have any questions on special education?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Aguirre?
Sorry, I'm just trying to get organized a little bit. There was some positions that either were not funded or they're built within the school. So I'm just trying to wrap my head around where we're at relative to FTE requests. Do you have any that you made as far as your piece of the budget that is not necessarily linked to a school? Or they all get linked to a school?
Sure, so I only request the positions that are not linked to a specific school. So I had brought my first request to subcommittee last month when you got, everyone voted to put the position out there now. So we are in the process of hiring for that position. And then I had talked to the superintendent during my budget meeting about, instead of just the one cluster coordinator, requesting two cluster coordinators. So that's not off the table completely, but it's one of those things that we're going to wait before we bring that second position forward.
So other than that, as far as the conversion, you don't have any new positions?
So then, no, I do not have any additional positions.
What I would say is, I'm looking at the budget where it says in orange about that conversion and I will say the same thing I said to the principal of Villa Ternor, I believe. If we have an unfunded, unfunded position, unfilled position, doesn't mean that we don't need that position. In addition, we have another need for something else. Doesn't mean we have to take it from there to go to here. That's just my opinion and I will say this again Thursday at the subcommittee. If we have a need for, like this says BCBA. So if we need 10 BCBAs based on the children's needs in the district, we need 10. You shouldn't be faced with, well, you can only get one of those that the kids also need if we do this. And I would say that, I said that to the principal, I would say that the same to you. One thing that is glaring that I think is, the inclusion is still something that doesn't sit well with me. We talked about it at the subcommittee relative to the kids do not get any services outside of math and English. That's a problem. I really think that's something that we got to focus on. I asked for class sizes, the class size report and I haven't had a chance to dig into it too well, but my gut tells me that the class sizes are very high, especially at the younger grades. And then when we don't have the proper supports, we're going to have more kids identified. We're going to have, we're going to start off from a deficit perspective than not. So I worry that we're not adding, if we had a zero-based budget, like I said, we should. We would say some of the non-negotiables would be every kindergarten class has a teacher rate. Every grade one has it, you know, something like that. I just worry that we're not being honest about what we truly need, not that we can find the people in our budget.
Right, right. I know, Mr. Aguirre, that the inclusion setting is the next goal of mine. So this year, the focus was really on pulling the data for our substantially separate student population and their level of need and the services that we provide them. And we've done a lot of work around that. And then next year, again, same thing. I need to pull a lot of information in order to be able to make those recommendations because it's very different across this district. Even elementary school to elementary school and then K-12, right? So without the right information, I can't say we need, you know, two more pairs in every grade from K-3. We, I can't say that without good data analysis. And there's no easy way to pull it because it's so different. So that's my goal and I absolutely, I think you guys know me by now, I'm not shy about asking for things. So I will absolutely ask those things because I see that our special education numbers continue to rise. We just pulled it today, we're at 3125 now, as of today. So the supports that's needed in a science and social studies class, I hear you. I just want to be able to make, you know, a good, confident recommendation and I don't have the information I need to do that at this time.
So I understand that. When I'm looking at the org chart, which the one like this, I don't really care for it, as I said before personally. But in the way I see your department based on subcommittee meetings and the full committee, is that we have you and then we have the compliance officer. As almost like the assistant superintendent, assistant special ed director. And then from there, you have departments and then people would fall under them. So I don't think that this, as Mr. Pacico said, he has one that's better than this, you probably?
I do too, yes, yes.
What I would ask is that gets presented Thursday at the subcommittee?
Sure.
Just so we can be on the same page with it.
Sure.
You have in here supervisors, I brought this up before, that all special ed supervisors, in my opinion, work for you and they should work for you.
Mm-hmm.
Not for a school, not answering to a school, they should answer for you. So under this, it should show that, or the organizational structure that is?
I can show you what I have put together and again?
So if you can add that to Thursday's agenda, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, I yield.
Ms. Rodriks?
I just have a comment. So we're talking about inclusion and I know that this is school level, but when I look at the unfunded positions, we have seven special ed positions that are unfunded. So when we talk about what's needed to create a truly inclusive learning environment, it's really hard for me to wrap my brain around that, that that's the direction we're going in. When I look here and we've got, you know, three at Green that aren't funded, that were requested and unfunded. We've got two special ed inclusion teachers that weren't funded. We've got another three over, three special ed pairs over at Sylvia. Those are the positions that really support kids being able to go out, you know? So it's more of a comment that I'm having a hard time wrapping my brain around. How can we say in one breath that we're trying to do this? And I think we are, but at the same time, we're not funding those pieces. And I get, you know, we have to make sure that we have the funding for it, but this has to be a priority. And I think we're in a, in a position now where we have folks that are really inclusion-minded to really make that shift. And I don't know that we've ever been in that position before, which is, you know, a positive thing. But you know, that's the hill I'm going to die on.
If I could just be clear, not a single SPED position was requested and we said no. What I said was, we needed to have a conversation with Ms. Obenchain. We put them on hold based on numbers and as she saw fit, she would support those requests. That's, we put them on hold. We didn't say, somebody didn't come to the table and said, I need a special ed teacher. We said, special ed and ELL, we need to include Ms. Obenchain, Ms. Agarala so that we can make decisions based on numbers and need.
So I think it just goes back to the process, right? Because when we get it, it just says unfunded positions. So what it doesn't tell us is that, hey, we've been talking about this and this is something that, you know, it's unfunded for right now, but that doesn't mean it's a no. That means it's a, we're not going to put it for right now, but it is a conversation that we're going to continue to have. Because when I look at it, right, I get the binder, there's a lot in here, it's fallen apart on me two or three times already tonight, right? When I look at it, as you can see, my papers fell out, you know, it just says unfunded. So I don't have a good understanding that, hey, we've had this discussion and it's not a no. It's a, these are the ones that we're going to prioritize first and then we're going to go back to it. And so that's the thing that I'm struggling with when I read it.
No, it's a valid point. Obviously, we need to be more clear on that. But there was never any intention of withholding special, we, I agree with you, we're all on the same page. We want our kids to have access. We just need to make sure because those numbers change all the time.
And they're going up.
From school to school, so she needs to be part of that discussion, needs to make those decisions.
Oh, I yield, sorry.
Mr. Corey?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Obenchain, for your commitment. It's an ever-changing landscape, special needs. And I really appreciate that you've, you're laser-focused on the fact that it is ever-changing. And I really appreciate your transparency in requesting in our subcommittees, you know, for whatever it is that you need because this department historically has not really worked out very well 20 years ago. But right now, I think there's more focus on this department today. And due to that focus, I think we're making it a better department. So I praise you and I ask you for your continued commitment. Stick around, you know, help us out, help us get the ship straight. And with that, I really appreciate, you know, how hard you're working to be laser-focused on this department. Anything that you need, you make sure you request it to us in the subcommittee, we'll get it for you. And I want to thank the superintendent as well for being laser-focused on the needs and the necessary changes for this department. Thank you, with that, I yield.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything further? Mr. Aguirre?
Can the superintendent or Mr. Almeida tell us what's in the contingency fund that we keep referring to? Because I keep hearing that we're going to, maybe, maybe, maybe. How much money do we have in that account and where is it located in the budget?
So the contingency account is under the superintendent?
So the contingency account is under the superintendent, and there is...
I would say probably not enough.
Hold on.
You know what I'm saying?
Actually, no, hold on. Sorry. The contingency is under, it's actually under finance, I'm sorry. And it's for $200,000, that's the contingency.
So then we need a one-to-one pair that comes out of that, like all that stuff, and you transfer it out of there?
Yeah.
And I just think that we're making a lot of commitments, that there must be some other pot of money somewhere, because we're gonna end up having to pay for some of these things during the year.
Understood.
And I just, it's not as clear where it should come from. My last question on special education is the circuit breaker. And do you know how much money's in it now, like what are, where are we at moving forward into the, because this is a budget discussion. How much of our circuit breaker funds are we gonna be using to fund special education?
So the, the plan is as of the end of the year to carry a balance of just over $3.8 million over, and of which we'll be spending $2.4 million next year for tuitions. And the remainder of what we're gonna carry over will be used to cover out of district transportation.
In circuit breaker or in extra money, like prepaid tuitions?
In circuit breaker.
So you're gonna use all of your circuit breaker funds to zero it out?
Yep.
As of?
So what we've been doing on a yearly basis is carrying one year's worth, which is allowed by the state, of the circuit breaker amount. So whatever we receive in FY '24 is carried forward to FY '25.
And then we're not gonna do that now? So we're...
We are doing, we are doing, that's what, that's the process that we've been using. So we'll be spending what we received in FY '24 and FY '25.
But then we're not carrying it over?
We...
So you're allowed to carry it over?
But we have, but we have to spend it, yes.
And then...
So the state requires, so the state requires you to spend, they allow you to carry one year's worth of revenue in circuit breaker per year, which is what we're doing, so...
Like money in the bank?
Yes, yeah. But you, but, but in the following year, you're required to spend what you received in the previous year.
And then the next year, you're gonna carry, so this year, you expect to get how much in circuit breaker? The same?
I don't, I don't know what it's gonna be next year, but I'd say roughly the same, maybe four million, somewhere in that range.
We'll start this budget with $4 million in circuit breaker available to be spent next year?
Yes.
And that decision isn't part of this?
Yes, it is. That's, so this, in this budget, I've got down at the bottom of the sped budget, you can see that we're using $2.4 million for tuitions. And the rest is gonna be, as we had noted on the slide when we did the presentation in February, will be used for transportation to cover out of district transportation.
And that's because the state now allows us to?
Yes.
Use some of that funds for that, not that we're giving it?
So as part of the $3.8 million that I just, I just referenced for you, Ms. Aguirre, $1.4 million was associated with transportation reimbursement.
And we don't have an option at that point?
I'm sorry?
We do not have an option for that?
We do, we do have an option. But we, as we did this past year, I followed that same practice forward for next year in FY '25.
So you told us that it was an option?
I'm sorry?
When we paid that money, you all told us that that was an option?
No, I told you that the reimbursement that we received was for transportation, that what we receive in circuit breaker is for tuitions and for transportation. That's, those are the reimbursements we've received.
And I recall the conversation was, we would normally get $2.5 million in circuit breaker.
Yep.
And we received $3.5 million based on transportation.
Correct, exactly.
So that's how we logically would...
And, and that's how we're doing it, yes.
So three years ago, we only, we got a million dollars less, or a lot money, more money less than?
Correct. So just, you know, just for reference, so in 2020, the figure was $2.8 million. In 2024, for this year, it's $3.8 million. So we've seen about a million dollar increase in five years.
And the amount that you have in the transportation line is, you have backup to show that that's the increase based on transportation?
Yes.
Not just because we said it?
Yes, I do, I do.
The, there's another account that we talked about, was the tuitions for special ed, a couple hundred thousand?
What's that?
The tuitions that we charge from out of district or something?
Tuitions that we charge?
Yeah, I think it comes in revolving account.
We have a revolving account, yes.
How do we access that?
So how do we act?
How does anybody access that money?
So typically, that revolving account, you know, theoretically would be used for Stone, it would be used to cover expenses over at Stone, because that's how we generate the money for that fund. So the money is for tuitions related to the Stone School, for students attending from out of district.
So I didn't think there was ever any money come out of that account?
It hasn't, we've been built, we've built, we've built up the fund.
Right, so I would just be curious to show the committee how the, how do we, how would money be spent from that?
So...
So would it just be the superintendent wants it?
So I guess we could, you know, we should work through, with the superintendent, through, through the school committee to figure out, you know, what the best plan of action is to spend that money. But, you know, on the financial side, I'd prefer to carry as much money as we, you know, you know, as much money as we can. If it's ever needed, we can tap into it, I would say.
Yep, thank you, I yield.
Anything further on special education? Hearing none? Student services. Anybody have any questions about the budget for the student services department? Ms. Rodericks?
It's a Monday. All right, so I have a question about this conversion, just like I've been asking everyone else. But this one, I'm especially concerned, because we sat here probably a year ago, really advocating for this position, talking about how we really needed to have somebody to integrate all of that SEL work into the academic pieces, and now I'm seeing that we're trying to convert that position.
So as we take a look across our buildings and watching the play out of that position this year, what we've noticed is there's a need across all 16 schools for SEL integration. And so to anticipate one person leveraging that work across all of our schools, it really didn't play out the way that we were hoping for it to. When we look at the need for our lead SAC position, that in particular person in that position is very much strapped thin, day in and day out, because the needs across all 16 schools for a person to help support with our tier-three situations, and in some cases, some of our students that are in need of tier-two support. So the vision for our department as we move forward would be to duplicate that lead SAC position, be able to divide and conquer so that schools can have a go-to person as their lead SAC in the district. We will then create a team at the district level to really infuse the work around SEL curriculum, which we are piloting right now across our schools, as well as the screener tools, as well as thinking about the integration model for SEL across all of our schools, looking specifically at Sylvia and some of the work that Sylvia has done with SEL integration. We wanna be certain that schools have leaders and go-to people that are part of their work day in and day out, not necessarily only coming in when things are at a high need. One of the other things I wanna point out is that in SY '21, we only had, we had 138 student support positions on the budget. We have grown this year, as of SY '24, to have 203 building-based support staff. So the request from principals has really been around, we need help building up, as Principal Simpson mentioned here at La Ternano, when he was up here earlier, you know, they added a few positions, it really needed to build up the skillset, the toolbox, and the way in which we do business in our buildings. And so I envision this work to create an opportunity to have two lead SACs where we can divide and conquer the district, but really have, have the lead SAC position, have a team at the district level, so we can all be on the same page of how we support our most high-risk schools and/or students, but at the same time, have a layer of consistency to ensure that all things SEL are being attended to through the lead SACs, and then through the building-based teams accordingly in buildings. There's a lot of professional expertise across our buildings, the opportunity to build folks up, meet with them on a regular basis, and ensure consistency for SEL integration across the district is the vision on where we see this moving forward.
So I'm just having a hard time with the piece around, it hasn't played out the way that we envisioned it. Because when that position was requested, we actually sat here as a committee and suggested that we have multiple of those positions, one at each grade level. So we'd have an elementary integration specialist, we'd have a middle school and a high school integration specialist, with the idea that all three grade levels had very different needs. And the response was, no, let's try it out with one first and see how that goes. And that person was really supposed to have both the teaching expertise and the SEL expertise, so a little bit different than what we're looking for with the lead SAC, right? That's what we had talked about, because we really wanted our teachers, we wanted somebody that spoke that same language as our teachers, to be able to pull that piece together. And from what I, when I remember from meetings and from conversations, we haven't really used this position or the person in this position to do this work, because I believe for a while, they were acting as maybe a vice principal at RPA for a little bit. So I'm struggling with the idea that we've used it to the capacity that we should, and then have looked at the data and decided this isn't gonna work in this way, to really make that decision right now, when this person only came on in like, what, January, February of last year?
I think even later than that, I think the spring, they came on in the spring.
So it's been less than a year that we've had somebody in this position, and for a position that we came here and advocated so strongly for, to now turn around and say we're gonna convert it, again, I go back to, once you convert it, it's gone, right? We're not gonna be able to refill that, and I am, I'm very strongly opposed to that, because I sat at a community meeting today where folks were being asked, apparently by somebody in the district, to create SEL activities for teachers to be able to integrate SEL work. There's a whole committee working on that, and supposedly, they were asked by someone here. So I struggle with we're converting this...
I don't know anything about that committee.
So I'm struggling with we're converting this and then asking somebody out in the community to do that work when we have someone hired to do that work. So, I mean, I, that's a, that's a position that I, you know, when somebody comes and asks for a position, advocates so strongly for, I have a hard time justifying that conversion less than a year later, after we haven't really used the person to their full capacity.
Well, and I think that has been a challenge with it, is that having one person in that position across 16 schools, when we're talking about pushing in and coaching up teachers, that's an intimate experience, right? One of the things that we really noticed right away with this position is to just open up school, a school, and have this person push in and push into classrooms. It really hasn't played out that way so openly and so easily, because of the fact that this person isn't necessarily living in that community on a regular basis. And so in looking at the work of the lead SAC position, knowing that this also lives within the work of those folks, but also going back to the building-based folks, when we think about SEL integration, I envision that work to be led through the building-based leads. So when we think about having highly-trained SACs in our buildings, as well as vice principals across our buildings that do take on an SEL lens, we, I envision that work to be led through the building-based teams, because that's where the traction can really be garnered.
It can, right? 100% it can. However, I don't agree that we've used that position at all in the way that it should have been used, because from what I understand, from the conversations that we've all had here, that person has kinda bounced around to different schools, not doing SEL integration work. I mean, we had this person filling in at RPA in a very different role for a few months. And so to then turn, and from what I understand, they were out for a little bit as well. So to say that we've tried it, it didn't work, I don't think that we've tried it. I don't think that we've tried it with fidelity to what that position was supposed to be. And again, that person was supposed to be operating from both the SEL and the academic lens to be able to integrate those pieces. So that's the part that I'm struggling with. Like, I, I wouldn't support that, and I know I'm one voice among many, but I fully do not support that, because we haven't tried it. We haven't really tried that work. Once we try it, if we go back and we say, hey, this is the data, this is what we've done, this is why it's not working, and this is how I can see, you know, being able to push this in, because the, the work of, the background behind a SAC, a lead SAC versus the SEL integration specialist are two very different roles. That person was supposed to have a teaching lens versus the SACs that are having a counseling lens. And so when you go to social work school, when you go to counseling school, you're not getting that, that academic, how do we teach this to a larger classroom setting versus the person who's an educator that's coming in with an SEL lens that can do that work. So that's, that's what I see as the difference between the two positions, and we haven't given it a shot, so I just have a hard time wrapping my brain around, why are we suggesting that we make that conversion when we haven't really given a shot? We don't have any data to say it hasn't worked, because we haven't tried it.
We also don't have any curriculum in the district. When we think about what this person was expected to come in and to infuse as a toolbox and a toolkit, right? So as we move forward this year, knowing we're doing some of the Satchel screening work and the SEL screener work, we're also piloting a couple of curriculums, we envisioned this work to be something that a number of the SEL support staff in the building were gonna own, not having one person in the district to be facilitating that work across 16 schools. While simultaneously, we have seen a high need for a, a lead SAC. And at the current time, our current lead SAC has also been very instrumental around infusing SEL in all of the work that she does across our district. And so with the need being pretty high, and in speaking with principals, this also came from meeting with a number of principals and asking about SEL supports, what are the supports that we need to help develop the support staff that we have invested very feverishly in the last few years, without much support and training that came along with it?
I think the two things can be true. Again, I think we can say that we have this really high need, and I agree, we have this incredibly high need for our kids. I think our kids, we're, we're triaging at much higher levels than we've ever had before. We've had way more crisis calls than we've ever had before. This is happening on the regular, and I would 100% agree with that. But I think that can be true, in addition to the need for somebody to really own that work of integrating and really training up folks to be able to do that SEL integration. Because again, I think the backgrounds are very different, and when we sat here a year ago, trying to advocate, listening to folks advocate for this position, we all said the same thing, this can't live with one person. And it was, let's try it out, see how it goes, and then add more as we, as we need. We haven't tried it out, and that's my point. We haven't tried it.
Correct, because I guess I envision these, the, the integration specialists to be living among and within our vice principal networks that are pretty deeply strong across the district. And we all know, vice principals come to the table with a wide range of backgrounds, as well as some support, some SAC support staff and/or guidance counselors at the secondary level, who could definitely step in and support with some of the curriculum implementation and be part of the daily boots on the ground. I think what we are seeing and what we have seen throughout this year is that our schools, as we all know, are very different from the north end to the south end and everywhere in between. And what it takes for someone to come into our schools and get traction, working with teachers, being in classrooms, offering recommendations, that is very hard for it to not be a consistent person who's in your building and who you, as a teacher, have relationships with on a pretty reoccurring basis, right? And so as we envision, as I envision this work being a, to build out a sustainable model, I truly, and having experienced it at Henry Lord as a principal, it was truly through those staff in my building that got in the SEL lane to help support and reinforce the work. And that was not every vice principal, it was not every SAC that engaged at that level, but it was a representation across my school, so that we can also build a district SEL team based on the leaders that are doing the work in our buildings day in and day out. So that is where the recommendation came from.
What does the rest of your team have to say about that piece?
The rest of my team is, is a team of three. I had a chance to speak with three of the, three, two of the three, and two of the three were on board with the idea of building up our bench to be more direct, to infuse into schools. We were not all 100% on the same page, nor were there really in-depth detailed conversations either.
Right, and so that's, again, a very struggle. I think that this is a position that was advocated for very strongly.
Yep, I understand that.
And now we're saying, never mind, just kidding, when honestly, we haven't given it a shot. And so I'm not gonna keep belaboring the point, but I have a very hard time with this, and I disagree with it, because I don't think it's a good move when we have folks that advocated, again, very deeply for this specific skillset. And I'll go back to, I think multiple things can be true at the same time. I think we can build up our building staff, I think the work ultimately will live with them, but to have somebody to spearhead that work, the position was designed for somebody to spearhead that work, and that person hasn't been given an opportunity. I think I've met that person one time, so I really can't speak to, you know, their skillset or anything like that. But again, I, we haven't given it a shot, so I have a really hard time converting a position, because again, once you convert it, it's gone, when we haven't even tried it. it. And we don't have the data to back up that it hasn't worked because we haven't given it a shot. And with that, I yield.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, so this is listed, listed on the, it's not listed on the conversions, it's listed on the cost containment. So it also is a little confusing on, on that. So I've said multiple times that I don't think this is the best way we should be doing budgets overall. I think that the use of subcommittees would have been much more efficient, and we would have got to the bottom line on some of these things with less questions, but actually a more in-depth conversation in a smaller setting. And I think that's what's happening here because we, I think we all agree that we need to increase the SEL integration into the schools. And I think we have job descriptions that we haggled with, we talked about, we did the same with the lead school adjustment counselor who at one point was not that, and then we made that position a higher level of union position, you know? So I think that we went through some changes for those that have been here for a while. And we all sit at the table and say, this is what we want to get to, how can we do it? What's in the union? Why is this? You mentioned lead SACs, like that to me is, all of the leads in the whole district, for the most part, I think should be eliminated personally, because they don't have the job description that allows them to lead and do the things that we need to do. But that's just an aside. But I think what we should do with something like this is have a subcommittee meeting where we talk about, it doesn't have to be this one, but I think maybe scheduling one where we can sit down and talk about, what does SEL integration look like across the whole school system? And I think we would come to some sort of agreement on, this is the best way to do it. It might be, the other position was 78,000 or 68,000, this one's 100, the other one's 122. Like, there's probably a way to get to us to all be on the same page. And I, my gut tells me that when we do that process, we're going to actually need it more than the folks that we currently have. So do we need a director of that and then two teachers, you know, at a different pay or something like that? So editing would be on the table, but I'd recommend we, we hold off on making this formal until we can have a subcommittee meeting and hash it out.
If I could just clarify, you're correct because the term is being used interchangeably. We used to have a lead SAC, then that was elevated to a coordinator of SEL services slash lead SAC. And that's that person that's sitting in that role. We have lead SACs that get a stipend to support schools, but this position, that's why it's in cost containment, because it's a higher paying position moving to a coordinator. That's.
Right, so you would agree that when we're looking at the budget in front of us, Ms. Costa is not the lead school adjustment counselor for 122,000.
Right, she's the coordinator.
Her title is something different. So all I'm asking for is to dot the i's, cross the t's. When you guys meet, figure this stuff out before it comes so that we're not mistaken, it's not a lead SAC making 122,000. That position calls for a lot different stuff. There also, we got job descriptions, union discussions, the whole bit that I think needs to go. But it's a student, this, this issue here is a student services one that, and it's kind of special, it's, I brought this up several years ago, and I still maintain it to this day. We have situations where we cannot get our children seen by a school psychiatrist for medication, medication management, and the like. I brought it up three times ago when the superintendent wasn't even in that chair. And I believe that we still need to do a contracted person that is dedicated to us all the time, and this is several years now we've been talking about this. And the excuses I got at the time was, oh, it's so hard to do, we can't do this, we can't. That's why we pay people $150,000 to go and figure out a way. But nobody's telling me that we don't have a need for us to have a school-based person who's dedicated to us a hundred percent of the time. Diamond Regional is currently in with the state about, oh, how wonderful it is we're going to have a community health center. And I read in the paper whether this is true or not, they're going to be able to give these services and all that stuff. I would say, that's a great thing. But we have needs that are 10 times more than Diamond Regional has for that, especially at our youngest, most vulnerable ages. So the state's giving them money to do a high school thing when we can't even do it and we want to pay. We need to sit down and say, how are we going to do this? Pay somebody that's onsite all the time, same, it could be Helturis, it could be somebody else. But we bring up these issues, and then we're only part-time, we expect those that are getting paid big bucks to be able to get that done. So I'm throwing it out there again, we need it. People can't even get a, a psychological assessment. We have people out in the community do not, they can't get one, even if they had money and insurance. What are you kidding me? And what are we going to do? We're sitting on plenty of money, but God forbid if in four years, we couldn't figure out how to get this person to be here as a consultant. It needs to just be done, bottom line. With that, I yield, thank you.
Anything further? Hearing none. Next agenda item is the superintendent, including school to be determined. Do we have any questions to the superintendent's budget and the school to be determined?
I have a question. What, what is, and this is probably just my ignorance, but Tiverton Intuitions? I've never seen that. Or maybe I have and I've forgotten.
So we have a situation where we have students that live the Saudi Pond area, which.
In the what area? I'm sorry.
In the Saudi Pond area.
Popica area. Oh, okay, okay.
Where, where it would cost a lot more money to transport the students to Fall River versus them just attending the schools there in, in Tiverton. So we worked out an agreement years ago with Tiverton where we pay a nominal amount for each student that attends Tiverton.
Okay. Am, am I mistaken that I hadn't seen that before? Because I don't remember seeing that on last year's budget.
We've, we've been paying it the last couple of years. It's one of those things where it, the bill always comes in last minute, is just typically what happens with Tiverton.
Maybe it was worded differently, because I, I feel like Tiverton would have stuck out to me, but, okay, thank you for clarifying.
No problem.
Anything further? Mr. Aguirre?
Can you please explain to us what the school to be determined means? Because it was stated, and I don't think everybody out there knows what that means.
Nope, that's correct. As you know, we've acquired 2501 South Main Street. Currently, we are, we have some pre-K classrooms on the bottom floor. The building will be ready for occup, for us to occupy the rest, the remainder of the building for the fall. We have to have some placeholders. We also have some, we've been planning and exploring options for us as a district, how to support our pre-K expansion, as well as to try to relieve some pressure for some high-needs areas overcrowding. So we know that we're going to have to have staff for, at minimum, for that building. We need to have a placeholder for a principal. We're actually, on Monday, are going to ask to actually start that process for, to get the leader in that building, to get people hired up, et cetera, as needed. But we're going to, it's, it would be a two-unit school and would need the supports like our typical two-unit schools.
So what happens if it doesn't come to fruition?
If what doesn't come to it?
We have a lot of line items, placeholders for staffing here. So are you saying we're going to do a school there? Are you still in open discussions? Like, so what we're going to do is this?
One way or another, that building will be occupied, right? So we have to have placeholders for staffing for the building to be occupied. Whether we actually are meeting as a subcommittee, as you know, this week, with some options of what we've looked at, options for occupying that building. And we will, we will have to have students in there.
So we might not be specific to all those positions, but you have a million and a half dollars of something that you might want to change. That's all. I'm just trying to, as we present the budget, that shows that, I think we need flexibility, you need flexibility to say, that's the money, but not necessarily all these, because the positions are listed. So I think you need some flexibility there, personally. That's why I asked. Thank you, I yield.
Anything further? Oh, I'm sorry, Sarah.
Just a quick question that was sort of like outside of that.
This could have been more.
I know, it's hard to see me over.
Yeah, I am sorry.
I'll start yelling from the.
That's better.
Hey, I'm right here. At one point, didn't we say that we were going to provide PARRIs in every first-grade classroom?
Yes.
Didn't we? Okay.
So you see there.
I see two PARRIs at the bottom, and then two kindergartens.
And then two, yes.
So we have two additional PARRI classrooms there? That's, I, going through this budget, not all PARRI first grades have been coded, but that was specific for first grade.
Okay. I yield.
Anything further? Technology department. Does anybody have any questions for the technology department? Mr. Aguirre?
Yeah, I just had the same comment about the org chart. I think it doesn't do a good job of explaining what we have. You probably have a better one, Mr. Cabral, I'm sure. One of the questions that I had just was on, we've had subcommittee meetings where we talked about when you became the CIO, that we've had, I think, pretty good subcommittee meetings where you discuss all of the things under your purview. One of which was the issue we talked about with the electrician thing. So I don't see it here. Maybe you want to comment on if you were listening to the conversation, is it, did I make any sense there?
So, so currently, right now, we have an individual that we basically job-share. I work with Mr. Pacheco on the daily, we have conversations, it seems like every hour some days. And that individual is working with us. In a perfect world, ideally, yes, I'd have a full-time, you know, low-voltage person. We keep adding devices, you know, across the network, and right now, job-sharing, you know, it's tough to get everything done in a timely manner.
So, Madam Superintendent, I think you heard the conversation as well, and I think it's pretty clear that we need to have Mr. Cabral be able to hire somebody. And that money would have to come out of somewhere in the budget because it's not in either one of theirs. So I, if you don't have any other contingency money, and the only one was the 200,000, and that position costs 70, I think your contingency is going to be down to 130. But you probably have other money, I'm betting, that you have, so figure it out. The other thing is that when we have the subcommittee meetings, I think I've asked you these questions over and over. You took on, under your org chart, you took, have Fred TV. So that means you're the boss of Fred TV folks. Like, that is the way the org chart works, as the CIO. Then you had instructional technology versus MIS, like you had all those departments.
Correct.
One that is very clear to me that we had this discussion multiple times, is that we have cameras in this place, in this district that have been all over the place on the thing. When you became the CIO, I recall, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, that we had subcommittee meetings where we said, Mr. Cabral, you're in charge of them, you told us you know how to fix them, you had guys that could do it in-house, blah, 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 all the stuff. But it fell under you, that that department was going to also include all of the cameras in this thing. So we're not wondering whose, whose responsibility is it? You've shown us on the computer, all kinds of different things that you can do. So I don't see on the org chart where that would fall. And I don't, I just don't know if it's under a person, or is there something else that we can add that says, what falls under, if I'm a person in the community and I say, oh, they have a CIO head, what departments fall under him, or responsibilities are under him? So I don't know if it's a, in addition to this, but I think, I think we're all on the same page that the cameras are all under you. But how does everybody else know that?
The superintendent and I and the senior staff, we can clean that up. The, you know, the org chart that's here, that are in the budget book were based on the admin positions to give a broad overview, all of the org charts, Ms. Sardina and I have been working on, they can be expanded so that you can see all of that.
Madam Superintendent, am I wrong that the cameras fall under, Mr. Cabral?
Yep, he's, he's normally oversees that.
He's in charge of the cameras across the whole district. And the only question I would have is, I didn't look on the conversions and all that stuff, but I think you've been pretty much asking for these as we go. Is there any of those other positions that we didn't fill or transfer, like, new job descriptions? Is there anything lingering that is not in this budget that is in your?
No, at this time, the only position that would be of great help would be to have a low-voltage person dedicated full-time on our end.
Yep, and other than that, you don't need any other ones?
Not at this time.
The only thing I would also say to the superintendent is to take note of the salaries. And we always should have an org chart that looks like, something like this, like we have at the district, that you're at the top, and then the people under you get paid a little less, and the people under you get paid a little less. I would just point to that as something I would like you to look at on this, this particular list. I yield, thank you.
Nothing further on technology? We did briefly touch on transportation. Does anybody have any questions there? Mr. Aguirre?
So ESR funds are gone after June 30th, September 30th?
September 11th.
So, and, and here it says preschool, million dollars. Does that mean we're going to spend a million dollars in transportation between now and September 30th?
So I've been in touch with the state in regards to transportation and the ability to be able to fund it for one more year. So they allow, so there's flexibility, late liquidation flexibility in ESR. And, you know, I've inquired about the certain things that we're paying currently out of transportation, I'm sorry, out of ESR, that we could potentially carry forward because we have contracts and things that are in place. And they indicated, they indicated that that's an item that we can pay for, for one more year. And so that's the reason why.
So the end-in is not September 30th for that?
For that, for that particular item, no.
What other line items have you requested that for?
No, so originally, when we were going, when I was going through the budget process, I had inquired about that CSE partnership that we had for Talvit, and whether or not we could continue that forward in ESR, and they had indicated no. They had given, I forget what the exact reasoning was, but they had, they had indicated no. But there was, there's a list of things that I had requested, but transportation was one specifically that they had indicated.
It just looks funny, personally.
No, I get it.
We keep saying the same thing, you keep saying, it runs out, it runs out. We're jumping all over ourselves, trying to figure out how to spend 0.88 of this and that. But conveniently, oh, we got transportation, we'll come up with a million dollars.
I get it.
My concern is, and we're not paying it, is that's a million dollars structural deficit for the city going forward after the current year.
Correct.
And the circuit breaker fund, I'm still, you're going to get this information, I'm sure, on that. But how we get to that 10.8 is a little bit concerning for me personally. But the mayor's going to pay that from the city side, so I guess that's less the problem that we have to worry about. But it is a structural deficit, right? In the following year?
For the following year, additional million dollars they will have to come up with, yes.
Thank you, I yield.
That's correct.
Anything further on transportation? Thank you. Last but not least, nutrition. Nutrition department. Do we have any questions on our nutrition department?
Yes.
Mr. Aguirre?
So one of the new positions that you had mentioned about PARRIs of equipment and stuff, I would assume that's going to come out of this budget. I'm sorry, Mr. Aguirre, what was that question? The revolving account, like, for the repair person you want to hire? Appliance repair?
Yes.
Is going to come out of that budget, not the maintenance budget?
No, it would come out of that budget.
Because the money is listed on the maintenance.
Exactly, yes.
I just have a question and a concern about the utility workers, and you know, I've had this conversation.
Yes.
Ad nauseum. I'm just concerned or looking for updates, it doesn't have to be today, but how that's going? Because it still is sort of something that doesn't make sense to me when we pay somebody to do the whole day, but I haven't seen it, and I haven't seen the reports on how a custodian's doing something else in a school, but the utility worker's only that calf. And I know it's a different animal. All I'm asking is if we could get some sort of update on how it's going? I've told you in the past, I thought it was a mess, I use all kinds of different terminology.
Well, some of that's changed, and, and again, some of it's changed because we do have personnel that are staying in these jobs, and they do have a person who is supervising them. So it is different. The, the operation itself is different, and the, again, the, the work in the cooking kitchens is totally different than it is in the regular kitchens. And which is why the regular kitchen, kitchens, depending on the size of the school, usually has a part-time person as opposed to full-time. However, we also built in, in the last budget, not this one, to have positions that would float. So we have five positions of full-timers that can float into different buildings to
buildings to do the work of the, of that particular piece, which is the utility position.
So a floating custodian?
They're a floating utility worker that are paid out of nutrition.
And if they don't need to float, they just?
They would, they would be assigned to a position, so there may be kitchens, there may be, um, work that the, that, that Mr. Cutting and, um, Mr. Raposo are looking to have done. Um, and I'm not quite sure, and I can get you a list of those outlying things that, that they have the floaters do when they're not tying in, into a position.
Yep, I'm just looking for some backup since we paid them all, and that's all. Get us a one- or two-page, it doesn't have to be anything extensive, but it'll make a little more sense to me. I yield, thank you.
Okay. Any further questions on the budget by our membership? All right. Hearing none, we did have tentatively a schedule for a third meeting, but I don't know why we would do that. Our next meeting then will be Monday, March eleventh, which is a regular school committee meeting. The following day is the joint meeting with the city council, March twelfth, for the state of the city. Following that, we will have a special meeting on March eighteenth for a vote to reduce, I mean, I'm sorry, to release the budget to the public. So those three meetings are coming up for everybody. I know there's some additional subcommittee meetings, but, um, I want to thank everyone in the district for their efforts to put the budget together. Uh, I thought it came out very well. Obviously, people do have questions, which is, uh, very positive, and I'm glad we got through it. Hearing nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Can I ask a question on that, please?
Mr. Aguirre?
So when we talk about the release of the, um, budget, you know, there's certain things we have to do, when are you anticipating that we're going to vote for a final budget? Under the, you have a schedule, but I don't have it in front of me?
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me either. We're, we're on our timeline, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Almeida's got it, Mr. I'm sorry. It is April, and then it goes over to this.
It's April, Ms. Aguirre, but I'll give you specific dates right now. So, um, the week of March, I'm sorry, March twenty-fifth, after the, the release of the budget for, on the eighteenth, uh, March twenty-fifth, the public hearing will be advertised. We'll hold the public hearing April eighth, and, uh, we have a tentative date here of[1736.38]